Okay, then let's open the April 11th, 2023 meeting of the Mullins Planning Board. First agenda item is minutes from March 28th. Next motion to approve. To me, would you also report this?
Recording in progress.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second your discussion.
Is there any discussion?
On the FY '24 budget update, it's on the third page. Three up from the bottom. And it mentions that Kevin did ask about the plan, the budget. But on the front page, it says that he did not, he attended the meeting but did not participate in the meeting. His attendants did not participate, but he did participate in a budget question. Correct?
No comment. I asked a question in the meeting, yes. Did I participate in the meeting, in my opinion? No.
Okay. If it's fine with you, then it's fine with me.
Didn't participate as a board member?
Yeah, well, I did say in the board's discussions, nor did he vote on board matters. So I did specify that it was related to the board business.
I just wanted to make sure we're covering all bases. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
That's Dane.
Aye.
Staying.
And then through the chair?
Yes.
I wanted to let the board know that I reviewed the tape from that week and sent Anita a document indicating that, or the certification document that she needs for the Mullins rule, that I reviewed the complete video of the last board meeting. That's it. She has possession of that certification letter. I shouldn't say Anita, the town clerk.
Okay. Next item, A and R lot on 57 Maple Ave. I guess this is going around a couple of times here. And we did, I guess, get some additional information regarding the property on Maple Ave. That information was sent to town council. And we do have a reply from town council, which it stuck to a huge long paragraph of what's required for approval. And I'm certainly not going to re-allow that. But her conclusion is, it says here, Lantern Lane does not appear to be public and that does not appear to be created by a duly signed subdivision plan under the subdivision control law. And therefore, the applicant must prove that it is a way that was in existence in 1954. I do not have any evidence of that. So where to from here?
Since 1954? That's the date? Well, I don't want to age you guys, but any of you remember Trail Park back in 1954?
I can remember the Bigelow's living in the house right there. There was no right-of-way at that time.
So they built that, that driveway has been there. And access, it's actually accessing that property that has all the Bigelow parks. So what I'm hearing, if it's not considered a public, a private road, as denoted the last meeting we talked about. So does Mr. Ames have the right to put a gate across that? Now you guys have a long dead-end road off of this, that service is probably 50 houses in there, maybe more. I don't think that's the way we want to go. I mean, it's pretty obvious it's a very traveled road privately, not made any out of town, not asked to be maintained out of town. All he's looking to do is split two houses on that property, as shown, that were there since he trailer parked. And he liked to get the one, the house, the big house on the left off, and then the yellow, it's yellow, can't see it's yellow here, but it's a yellow ranch style up on the right upper part of the land. The driveway comes off of that private road to access this house. Their driveway comes off like this into here, doesn't come off of Maple Ave. So they're accessing it, they're accessing it, they're accessing it, and this whole project is using it. So, and it's been for a long, long time. I don't have any documentation, the town clerk didn't have anything because it's a private road, so they wouldn't have public road documentation. It's been there quite a long time. And zoning-wise, those lots meet the zoning requirement if we consider that a private way. So we're trying to make one part of the law real because you can't have more than one dwelling on a single lot, which this has had two dwellings. Not really, because that private road did split them, but it was never defined that way. It's all been on one big square and that private way has a right-of-way going through it. I don't have any other evidence other than that. And then the 2006 ZVA ruling of it being a public, a private road, when Barney Bessie asked to eliminate the cul-de-sac at the end, because we're just going through anyways, going on this private road. And that documentation you do have, and town council must have got that.
They got the whole package.
So I don't know where, I'm a lawyer, so I can't speak on what they're looking for. But I do have a lot of common sense and I have attended a lot of these meetings. And I was actually proud of the design in the back for Barney when we put in, I think it was 32 units, that were using this as their second means at any time. There was no questions and no issues with it. So now we're looking to just separate two houses. And yes, you will gain one single family TC zoned possible house lot out of it. It's a perfect area for it, it's got water and sewer. And that's it, then that's done, there's nothing else left to to subdivide or to do with this piece of land.
Can I ask a question? I'm just curious on this, if right-of-way versus easement, did we look at the deed to this property? And if the deed states if it's a right-of-way or an easement?
The deed says it's a right-of-way.
It does say it's a right-of-way, not an easement?
Yeah. Right-of-way.
Because that's going to
What would a right-of-way is for?
Be pretty telling as to, because you can't, am I correct that you can't put frontage on an easement? Build a house versus an easement?
I believe not.
Because, so I'd just like to see the deed to make, verify that. And you say that, I want to believe you. But if we can read the deed to say that it's a right-of-way versus an easement, if it's an easement, I don't know that it can be approved in the A and R.
Does it say right-of-way? It can't be.
Through the chair, Norm, that's the problem I've got, exactly what Kevin said. Because it says in November 29, 2002, which we were talking about, the ZVA, it says the deed aims to Barney to Bessie dated 29 November. The plan describes the easement, doesn't say right-of-way, so I'm struggling with.
This, in the deed, because this plan references the deed surveying, is a 20-foot right-of-way, R O W, is what that 20-foot script going through there is.
But we also have the deed that says easement.
Well, there you go.
The deed references.
I think your plan is wrong, Julian.
This is as far back as we could go, it's the 2002 deed. We couldn't go back any further, find it in deed or nothing.
It physically exists, so that's going to be worth something. It physically exists for not just these three houses, but for a complete project. And if that's the way, I gotta tell them, well, if you can't use it as a private road, then shut it down. Put a gate on the end of it and let them deal with a dead-end road. And I don't think that's right, that's not what anyone's looking to do.
Through the chair, Julian?
Yeah.
Is there any way that that, the house lot, I believe it's number two now, would be able to access the road and the cul-de-sac in Bonnies?
There is no cul-de-sac in Bonnies.
Oh, okay.
We eliminated, that's what that 2006 thing was all about.
Right, I remember.
It doesn't, and right now, because we're calling it a private road, you can get frontage off of that for that particular lot. Because we also need it for this lot. This exists. And their driveway comes off of that, off of this right-of-way. This exists, and their driveway comes off of that right-of-way. This exists as a house, and it comes out, there's their driveway. And that continues right up through to this line up here and goes into the trailer park.
Let me ask you a question, Julia. To chair is, since that's an easement, does that give the right of those homeowners to access that? And if it's on their deed, to be able to access the road? That's the reason why the gate thing I'm a little struggling with.
That's another gray area, and a gate can go up until it's resolved, so.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
I know, but I know we didn't pick out the word right-of-way unless it was on a deed somewhere in this whole, in this whole survey of this property. Maybe call it easement in one place, but it's a right-of-way. Right-of-way easement, they have the same bearing, except an easement would be more used for maybe a utility, for a sewer, for a water, for electric.
Through the chair, that's the intent, not a house. If it was put in as an easement.
If I didn't finish that, or a road, it's a different language. But I thought we were at the next point, the town council digs in deeper, and they're doing what they gotta do. But if that's not a private road, then I'm gonna have to recommend to them that you can't take the liability of it anymore. Just shut it off and let it go. I mean, what, it doesn't make any sense.
Feeling threatened.
Yeah.
If I may, through the chair, I'm sorry, may I?
Yeah.
What I'm hearing, in my opinion, is that if we don't approve this, you're going to recommend to the customer to put up a gate and stop access to those other three houses.
I'm telling you, I am going to make that suggestion. They're probably not going to listen, but I will, because it's not fair. And we've been going around this thing for four months now.
They lost the law.
And because of the wording, not the intended use or the use that's there, there's other roads, how about Deman Pond right-of-way?
You don't show up my road down there, you.
You know, Deman Pond right-of-way, it's a private road, and it's a right-of-way.
Should it have been approved that way? When all those houses put in, if nobody asked the questions at the time, they're going to go in just because they were in and put in non-property, it doesn't mean today we have to do it.
I mean, I had one down there, I had one down there that this board signed, had 50 feet of frontage. And they split, another surveyor came and he split that in half. 50 feet, and gave each house 50 feet on a private road, 25 feet on each house. There's a brand-new house and an old house.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Is there any way a deed could be filed to create it as a right-of-way? I was going to say, why can't they update it?
It's written, it's definitely written in one of the documents. So I guess I'll have to find that document where it calls it right-of-way. I think there's an old plan that calls it right-of-way. That the, no, 2002.
The only thing we can find was the Ernie's Way, but it doesn't really, it doesn't call it out. I don't think, maybe 2006. He calls it out as an easement.
In the deed?
No.
On that plan?
Yeah, the only deed we can find was the 2002. Maybe it's unindexed, I don't know.
It won't be indexed in the town because it's not public, so.
Not in terms of the deed, at the registry.
So I gotta find, so if I find something that it called it a right-of-way, you'll have more of a because I don't know what to tell you. I mean, that's kind of a
Isn't it, isn't that way for 20 years?
It's been there like since the 50s.
It's already, it's already in place, you can't change it anyway. What are you changing?
Nothing. I'm trying to split the two houses. Right now, it doesn't need zoning because there's two buildings on one piece of land. That's the way it exists. But we do have a right-of-way going through the middle of it. So one's on one side, one on the other.
We have an easement.
Because it's, if we give frontage for the other one, the one that's existing, obviously, the other side is frontage. So we created a conforming lot that we believe is allowed under the definitions. But I can't get your record of it being private other than the same person who built it's daughter owns it now. And she's in her 80s.
Through the chair, Dave, this is a question for you. It's something what Julian said. Back in 2002 or in 83, when this was put on the deed as an easement, that could have been put on an easement for access to those other properties. Is that a correct statement?
It's not clear to me what the easement does. I mean, there's two easements in play. There's one for water and sewer, which is clear.
Yeah.
And then this other one is called an easement on this document? It shows up as a right-of-way in the plan, I
All I'm trying to say is that if it was set up for an easement for access, I get that. Because we have that in town too. There's been easements set up for access for houses that are on the side of a hill that the road can't go up that way. You ease, you put an easement to get access to it, I'm fine with that. But in this case, trying to use an easement for an A and R is where I'm struggling with.
But you're using that same piece of land. And I don't mean to have any conflict with you, Kevin, that I'm telling you to put up a gate. But the people who own it can't use it, but the people who go through it can? That doesn't make any sense.
I didn't write the deed.
It doesn't matter, I mean, just common sense says, I own this piece of land. They get to use it, I should be able to use it. That's no law there, that's just being human. So I thought we had this hashed through last week, or two weeks ago.
Is there any other paperwork?
I don't have any other paperwork other than it's gone through ZVA in 2006 to eliminate that cul-de-sac and then the plan.
Because I can remember walking it, I believe you were there way in the back, you know, when they put the, what the cul-de-sacs were.
Yeah.
We did that a long, long, long time ago.
That was in 2005, 2006, '07, or that?
I think it was earlier than that.
And then
This wasn't here.
So she asked Barney, that has nothing to do with this piece, actually. Her project was designed with a turnaround because the fire chief wanted a turnaround out there. And then she went and said, well, this is already a private road. Why do I need to put a big bubble in the middle of a private road? And then ZVA voted to allow, and you have that documentation.
Yeah, that was later.
And so it just kept going.
Just wondering if there was any mention of it back then, you know, when that was, you know, the concom and all that, whatever else was done at that time.
All he had was what's on record and just that his wife and sister-in-law have owned it after their parents.
Yeah.
And it was the main, that was the main access to the backside of the Bigelow Trail Park. And then it got changed in the back. But this hasn't been changed, this is exactly registered since day one.
Lewis was
Yeah, Lewis was the main one that I can remember.
Lewis was the main access to that rail, of course, wasn't it?
Yeah.
And then it hooked around to Lantern Lane.
Later on, they
Yeah, they added that on to I just, I'm struggling with, the deed says easement. I understand common sense, but it's
How do we handle the two
It's a law against legalities. I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to do here, it's not, I don't
Tell me that, how do we handle two pieces of tape so they can't sell the one house from the two? But yet, in this town, with this board, up off of Deman Pond right-of-way, there was a house lot with 50 feet of frontage, and you allowed them to split that 50, 25 and 25, and build a new house on 25 feet of frontage.
I wasn't on the board then.
Well, this is a little, little bit really more clear than that.
That road, I made through the chair.
Handle bags?
No. It was No. What was that?
You were on the other side, the point.
It was behind our
So through the chair, you know, for me on this one, the yellow highlighted section on this, and you know, this is from our attorney. Says here, Lantern Lane does not appear to be a public and it does not appear to be created by a duly signed subdivision plan under the subdivision control law, and therefore, the applicant must prove that there is existence in 1954. I don't have evidence of that. The untitled plan shows any way with an approximate area of the easement or right-of-way, she didn't define it one way or the other, but the deed says it's an easement. I have asked the town clerk to look at tax maps and street maps that show Ernie's Way or a right-of-way or an easement as far back as 1954. And this, you know, so I'm going by what our attorney's telling us on this one.
Through the board, how do we, we can't separate this? We have to have two houses on one lot?
The other, the other problem that I actually hear is that if you find anything that calls it a right-of-way, that document would have to be dated after 2013. Because this is the document that's ruling now. So any mention of a right-of-way would have to be sometime 2014, 15, or whatever, after. So I
But not before?
Right.
I'll say this, lawyers also aren't perfect. Okay, so I just need some guidance from the board on what you want me to tell Mr. Ames about. Can he split this into two? You'd like to get the three, because it seems only fair. But to get the house separated from the other lot, what do we do? How do we do this?
What if you can't?
I'm asking you, how can you not? It's against, that should have never been allowed then, if that was in a private road.
But now, is it the, through the chair, is it the, is it our purview to go and change an existing house lot with two, you know what I mean?
So too bad for you is what you're saying, too bad for my guy, who's, that's been there for
Reading the law as it is?
A long time ago.
Someone once said, if you hire an expert opinion and you don't follow that opinion, you'd be pretty foolish.
Yeah, see, I just can't, I can't go against what I mean, I'm not saying Amy's perfect. I've proved her already much longer. This seems pretty cut and dry to me.
I don't know, I'd say investigate, seeing if you can get a change from an easement to a right-of-way.
Yeah. If you change the deed, that would
I'm not opposed to it, I'm opposed to going against legal counsel's advice. I'm not opposed to do, if you, like you said, if
How could we do it so that I, you could do it, so I gotta go to ZVA? How can we make this so we can make this happen?
If it said right-of-way, I think it would have made a difference if there's a
Well, that plan said right-of-way.
Well, a plan that you wrote versus
Fire, it takes information and bits and parts and puts it together from records. We don't typically, well, what do we call it a right-of-way at this point? Now it solves that problem at this point on, it's a right-of-way.
What we need to do is get the owners of that particular piece of property that's called the easement to file a new deed calling it a right-of-way.
That would happen with this, and these deeds would now call that a right-of-way.
Yeah, but to get to this, there has to be a deed, in my opinion, that calls it a right-of-way to start out with. So those, one piece of property, if it had a deed or updated deed that said right-of-way, then I can buy into it. But right now, as an engineer, when I put together a plan, like you said, you pull all the documents, the main legal document that we have right now from 2002 and from 83, I'll call it an easement. There's nothing in a legal document that's filed with the registry of deeds that calls it a right-of-way. That's what I'm struggling with right now. I get that it's been there forever.
And the purpose of the easement is to give a right-of-way to the people behind it. So that's the purpose of the easement.
Can I say something?
Please.
When the town takes roads from me, and when I turn it over to the town, it only takes an easement. They don't take the road. Well, they just take it easy. They don't take the land, they don't take the fee, which is the bottom of everything. So an easement is a road.
An easement is defined on what you use it for. Use it for getting water, you know, for sewer, for roadway, for walking, for stacking firewood, for whatever you want to call it, you can do it.
The town specs.
So that's I just would like somehow if we can get an answer, I can tell Mr. Ames, I thought we were there tonight from last meeting, but this is fine. Not being told that right-of-way, easement, they don't mean the same, but they do mean the same because that portion of property is there to let people pass and repass from Maple Ave throughout that project and come back up.
Norm, or through the chair. Me personally, I don't have that skill set. I would go back to legal counsel and ask, what legally can we advise?
No difference between an easement and a right-of-way.
Yeah, what legally can the board advise as a client or an applicant to do? Because I don't want to do that in open board, because I'm not an attorney.
And don't forget to mention that, there's two houses on this piece of property and three, another person using this as access to it. There's a lot, there's a lot of parts to this. And you're worried, oh, what's going to happen in the future? With this plan, in the future, this is defined as a right-of-way, or you can call it whatever you want, private right-of-way, we're treating on it. And that'll never change again. That's done.
That corner house, when, what is that built? Have any idea?
The other one, it's got a stone foundation, so it's back in the day. It's going to be 40s, 50s. Doesn't have a regular concrete foundation.
Through the chair?
I was kidding if I had to.
I, personally, I think that you have made some good points of that's being, the point to that being used, whether it's an easement or a right-of-way. But I agree with Kevin that we have the advice from the lawyer that it needs to be proved that it's a right-of-way.
Can I get an opinion from another lawyer?
Pardon me?
Will you pay for it?
You guys pay for it. We're convinced on what we should be able to do here for this property, but it's unfortunate.
I still don't understand, through the chair, why you couldn't approach that right-of-way. I suppose it would be the same issue from the other, other side of the back line now.
Is there a list of private roads in Rottland? Aren't all the ones that, Pool Sandy Beach, aren't those all private roads?
Yes. They're, I don't know for a fact.
They go through the forest, up over the hill, through the forest to Grandma's house, and that's all legal frontage. There's not even sign that there's a road there. I know because I've done a lot of survey out there. This is physically on the ground. People use, I guarantee you, since we started talking, an Amazon truck drove up that road.
Let me ask you a question, Julian, which is something I've learned from Director Buckley. Does the town plow that?
No, they don't.
Okay. I have a hard time with the private way.
That's what I was just going to ask.
Because Joe has a list of private ways that were accepted way back when, that were plowed back then, that he will continue to plow, is a list of those. I don't know if that includes every private way in Rottland, but there, there is a list that he has of private ways that he has continued to plow because.
They used to plow to Mrs. Erickson's off of Demon Pond right-of-way, which was an offshoot, oh, we down the hill to the bottom of the hill. So should they start redoing that one?
I don't know.
Did it before?
All I'm trying to do is give some advice that there is, that.
I'm just looking for some advice on what can I tell my client? How do you get these two houses separated? Because technically in this town, you're not supposed to have that. And it's always been assumed they were indirectly separated because of that right-of-way in the middle.
We need something officially calls it a right-of-way.
So I did two things. So if you're looking for the right-of-way, you're looking to know that was created 1954 or earlier. Because the time is, the time is relevant. So not just showing us a right-of-way, but listing when it was created as such. That's a comment. Then the question I think is this, is this eligible for it to be treated as a subdivision? A three lot subdivision with waivers granted for what, what's tenement to a common driveway?
We got to go through that process, I'll suggest it.
If you're looking for some kind.
That would. But it doesn't give us frontage. I can't get frontage, legal frontage on Maple Ave.
You get the frontage by creating a new road for as long as time. It's a small cul-de-sac, small cut-in.
What does that open up? What does that open up? How much time do I get to spend with Kevin?
Let me give you the.
Retired, they want to get rid of this. You have two houses on your property, you need to separate that. So, because you got two houses on one property. Who's going to buy two houses on one property? Husband like that forever. So, and I know I, I wasn't the person who did the one that I'm referencing on Demon Pond right-of-way, but I sat in this room and went, wow, great, we should be able to do that. So.
Is the, through the chair, is the option for the owner, the only option to create a new lot for potential sale? I guess I'm just curious, could, is the, is the only option for the owner to really do what is doing here and have one lot separated from the rest? So you're trying to create a lot, right?
Yeah.
But do you have to create another lot?
No one has to do anything, but he'd like to, to help pay for.
And I fully understand. I'm just curious if he, if he were to take.
Took that off and combined it so we had the house on one side and the other on the other side?
Split it down the middle and now both houses have a little more acreage, they got two homes in the center of town.
And if that's, would the board be comfortable to do that? To use that right-of-way as a dividing point, so now that house, the rectangular one on the, on the right, comes down that right-of-way, but their boundary would be along the side as I showed it, is the lot right down the middle of it.
If you're not creating a new lot, then I, maybe that's another question for Amy, but if there's not a new lot created, does that change?
That's, that's a way.
Maybe it's a little. No, I was just going to say that maybe the owner can get a little more money for the larger, the two larger house lots one, or whoever owns those house lots and the existing houses could be sold and a little extra money.
I'm open to that one. He really wants to get those two separated. That was one of the focus points, so I'll run it. If this board is amenable to that, that.
Through the chair, let me ask another question. If, since this is an easement, as it's defined in the deed, can that be used as a, as a potential for a common driveway for those two lots? If it serves one main house and then goes off as a second common driveway to the, the larger lot two, since it's an easement?
It still doesn't give frontage.
Oh, frontage.
Oh, there's no frontage? You got me on that one, yeah.
We don't have the required frontage for that zone.
Yeah.
I need a hundred.
Damn. Yeah.
Would these, since that is listed as an easement, would these now be considered non-conforming lots?
Well, right now it's one lot, which has two houses on it.
With a right-of-way going through the middle.
With a right-of-way.
Yeah.
Right-of-way easement.
But if you were to change the lot lines, that would be creating non-conforming lots, wouldn't it?
Correct.
Yes, without bringing.
With subdivision approval. Like you said, if it's subdivision approval, we're not proposing any roads or anything, we're just looking for approval from the board to split that into two. But what are you hanging hat on on that one? Do I take, do I take all the frontage, a little bit off of Maple Ave, 25 feet, and hold that right-of-way as that part of that lot? So they have frontage?
Yeah.
Um, when was the house on the right built?
I don't have the dates, but they've, they've been there well over 50 years.
Well, I'm just wondering if that date predates the 1954 date.
I would guess it does just from.
But I don't know.
The tax bill will show it, right?
Yeah, it should, I would think. It's, it was a, it's a trailer, right?
That one, no, that one up there was, I believe it is like a trailer.
It is, yes.
There's a water sewer, driveway, and an octagon.
I mean, if the use, if, if the requirement from the attorney is to show use 1954 or earlier, having structures on there that were accessed, I would imagine provides sufficient evidence that it is, that it has been used as a right-of-way.
Yes, I'm not going to use this against anybody. So what's that, what's that address at that house on lot four? Anybody have an idea?
The 57A and 57B currently, right? Look at the mailboxes saying.
We're going to go with B. We're going to assume that's B.
I believe it, I don't know what they have, what they have for an address. The main house is number 57.
Well, there is A and Bs on the mailboxes, I saw them today.
It's just going to A and B, most likely.
Ames Williams Trust, which one is that? All I've got is a 57 Maple Ave. Oh, it's got that whole parcel.
I got some intel.
Yeah, it's all, it's that.
Year built, the big house was built in 1942 and the trailer was built in 1950.
And right now it's listed as one big parcel line.
Let me see where that came from.
Somebody's watching. They're doing the same thing I am.
This is like a millionaire show, you ask questions.
Call a friend.
Call a friend.
Too bad Barney wasn't here, she probably could rattle it off.
I want tax bill must list both houses on. And if not, we don't let Amy know.
Yeah, this is the main house.
Peter said, if this is, it's on the assessor's card.
That's what.
1950, 1940.
This house right here was built in 81. Let me see if I got anything else. But it doesn't show.
Do you know the seat for Pete? Can you go sit up there?
That's this house.
So where does that put us now? So that was there in 1950, this is before 1954.
And that was the only access.
That was the only access to it.
At that time.
Yeah.
So logically it must have been, it must have acted as a right-of-way, whether or not it's in letter deeds.
You can get there any other way.
I mean, I, through the chair, I, I get that it acted as that and at some point there was a house built on that property.
1950.
1950, yeah, 1940, so the, the one by the street, the white house, the main house?
Main house. No, the main house was built in 1942.
No, it says 81 in the, in the assessor's.
1981?
Yeah.
That's the other one.
They might, they might.
It's on the corner.
That house is.
Well, then once he has one, so this isn't 57 Maple. No idea.
The assessor's card says 42 for the main house.
Here's what I've got for 57 Maple. That's not that house. That is this right here, that whole parcel with part of, that is 57 Maple. This whole thing is 57 Maple by the assessor's card. As 1.58 acres.
From the old man goes up there.
And it's, it says it circled A, so on the assessor's map, Mal, there's no B. See that A right there? But there's no B. But this property is part of the 1.5 acres of the total. Basically, it's all, all of this right here, it's not divided up.
Does the tax card show two houses?
No, it shows, it shows one.
So they, they haven't been getting trashed property in the last 50 years? The owner hasn't been paying proper taxes? That's more of a mess for me.
You make sure I'm correct.
Wait, I wish I had the mile on two weeks ago. We'd have been gone. So you guys tell me what you'd like me to do to try to get this, or does it say it's two? Now we can put two houses on lots.
Oh, you're, you're right, Julian.
I'm all for that.
It says year built 1942, effective year built 1982. I don't know what, I don't understand the card, so I don't know what that means, but, but it basically shows, if this outline is correct, it shows this house right here is the picture. That's all, unless I'm seeing something down here and I missed it. Oh, here's the other house, I apologize. 1950 is when that house was built. Is that the trailer that's over here?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't go far enough, I apologize. Says year built 1950, effective date 1982. And it's got a.
Effective date?
I don't know what that means.
I've never heard that either.
Does that mean the date to put it on the property?
But it's all called out as 57 Maple, there's no A and B.
I just write you for mail.
Yeah, yeah, I, I can't tell you that one. But it calls a building one and two, so this is considered building one, that's considered building two, all in 57 Maple. So it's taxed, to your point, Kevin, it's taxed, it's two buildings on the same property. So that even throws more of a wrench in the monkey.
Well, no, we can actually clear some stuff out, that this was built before 1954.
Yeah.
So that helps because of what we're trying to do. So there's your proof, Dave.
Oh, and.
That's fine, we can.
It says here that address changed 413, 2013, to number 57A and 57B. It's a note on the card. Note on the main card for both buildings. So at some point they did, they just never, never updated the assessor's map.
So that's because the assessor's map is based on deeds, not based on mailing addresses.
And vision is just based upon, it's a tax record, correct? The vision system?
Effectively. It's a collection of all the assessor's data.
Okay, thanks.
So now we found out that that house was built in 1950, the trailer.
But when was it put on the lot?
1950. That effective date has nothing to do with when the house was built. Things happened in the 80s in this town.
Could have been a reevaluation or.
Either a reevaluation, it's when they assigned new house numbers based on a bylaw that had been passed. All kinds of things happened.
So, if I may through the chair, no, sorry.
No, go ahead, I was just going to, well, I mean, go ahead, I was just going to say that, is that enough proof that that house stood there in 1950 that that was a right-of-way?
No, because the, go ahead, Kevin.
I was going to, yeah, the deed, the deed is there, this note from Amy. Read it again, we've read it multiple times here. Lantern Lane does not appear to be a public and it does not appear to be created by a duly signed subdivision plan. The applicant must prove that it is a way that was in existence in 1954. So if you were to go to Amy in the assessor's office tomorrow.
They have nothing. I went, I went to the town clerk.
So they can't prove, if this house was built in 42 and 50.
Yeah.
Was there ever another access to these two houses?
No.
First off, this is wrong too. If you look at this, I apologize if you can't see that, that easement, where it starts is on this person's property.
Which is which.
See that?
I wish I didn't.
But the maps are not always precise.
It was just kind of good.
Correct, but I'm just, I'm looking at.
One to the, to the right was done in 1932. Did the driveway show as though into it?
Yeah.
So that one was there, where they're using this private road, in 1932 it was built, and they're using that road today to get into the direction. There's three, three properties using this before 1954. So I guess that's as much as I can come up with.
So, so if I may, the question I would ask is, the lawyer said, the, the attorney said that the applicant needs to prove, what provides sufficient evidence? Which goes back to his question, what does he need to do?
Right. They don't, in other words, they don't really state what sufficient evidence is.
Exactly. And so it would, I would imagine therefore, that it's up to this board to decide if evidence that's provided is sufficient, and if not, what would be necessary.
Can David, or can we ask Amy, since we looked at the, sent her a copy of the tax card, and say we verified that both houses were built previous to 1954, is that sufficient evidence?
And the other one using it.
And the other one using it, 1930, whatever, is that sufficient evidence?
But she asked.
It was a way in existence in 1954. Is there any evidence that there wasn't an additional driveway to lot three? Is there any, you know what I mean? If there's never anything to show that that house in the top right ever had any other access, then it's been a.
First one. In, in the same letter, you said that town council was, she left that on the table to need to bring to you more evidence, and we just did. I don't think you need to go back to town council.
Oh, she said, she does say, I do not have evidence of that. I guess my.
She needed it or you needed it. So I'm just trying to keep her out of the picture because that just costs everybody.
I know, it costs us, but also it's the, it's the legal advice of our attorney that makes it easier for me to make the decision.
Yeah.
So to answer your question, if that's a question you want to circulate to town council that based upon this conversation, the assessor's field card, which I can provide, I can ask the question, you consider this to be sufficient? I think ordinarily what she would consider to be sufficient is a, a plan of land showing a right-of-way with a date for when it was created, with some kind of a textual description. A text and an image together is usually, you know, currently what would be looked for. However, the further back you go, the records are not necessarily complete. So a deed reference, a chain of deeds going back to before 1954 with the references to it, a plan of land, a textual description, or this, if she would consider that, so if that's how you'd like to go.
Julian, let me ask you a question.
This is what we have, so.
Unless she wanted to decide it's easy enough tonight.
Julian, because, again, you can't see this, but this little picture, and I'm sorry that the iPad's too small, it shows an easement on lot eight. Is there any chance that deed on eight has a reference to a right-of-way on it and you just haven't seen it?
On lot eight?
Lot eight, the picture I have up here shows the easement starting on eight and
Lot eight, the picture I have up here shows the easement starting on eight, and then.
Which is lot eight, the one off of me.
Bottom right, yeah, bottom right.
Let me just show you. Bottom right, that's the sewer easement.
No, 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 it's completely different.
And now, the one thing I'm going to say is, the assessor's maps.
Oh, this is GIS we're looking at.
This is a GIS map, see, it's got the.
That's based on the assessor's data.
So you get surveyed map?
Yeah.
So this doesn't even show the real sewer easement, does it? So that, I don't, I'm just throwing stuff out there.
That doesn't, that doesn't exist, that's.
Okay.
This is what exists.
Sorry.
Through the chair, I would like to get Amy's, or the lawyer's opinion on whether or not that would be sufficient evidence.
Okay, I got one more bit of information. Easement on plans is a right of way, easement in the deed references a sewer, the sewer easement. So that may be the easement you're reading in the deed.
There's two easements.
Two easements.
Yeah, it only has one listed.
It says, right of way, easement on plan is a right of way, is a right of way, and then there's a sewer easement. So I guess I'll have to.
Find it in the deed.
Dissect this even further and. I don't know if that's gonna be enough information. So just, if you guys could just tell me what, I could tell my client how he can separate these two houses, or he can't. That's, that's his biggest hangup, and I believe this board has the power to do that.
Been around seventy years, I'll tell you that.
This was the cleanest way to clean up what wasn't done over the last hundred years.
The easement mentioned in this deed is definitely not the sewer easement. Because it's stacked up about a, about a acre and a half, and said twenty-foot easement, then proceeds at an angle. And you can definitely see the angle of easement, there's no angle to the sewer easement.
Right.
Are we in agreement to send this back to?
Yes, I think, I think I'd rather just send it back to Amy and get a quick update. It's my, I'll agree with that.
Yep.
And part of that.
Now, see if I can find anything else, we'll try.
Well, I think we should also, to your point, Julian, ask her, can you give us a list of how we can advise the client on what documents?
As far as, if she's requiring a plan recorded at the registry of deeds of that, that doesn't exist.
Okay.
So that's, that I know.
If I just made one last, I mean, sometimes people can't do what they want to do on their properties.
Well, I just want to know how, how can they move forward to split these into two? Or does that give us rights to put two houses on lots?
It might be back to the subdivision approach.
Yeah. Subdivision went on the road, but, okay.
Well, subdivision, you just create the furniture that's necessary to create furniture for the back one and the back ones. You take your furniture out of Maple, out of the main one.
Mm-hmm.
You just get your, you're in a TC zone, so it's a part of your property.
Right.
So you make a bulb that has it, and that, the furniture is a function of the bulb.
Okay.
Ask for the waivers.
I appreciate it, maybe that will be enough of town council, and we go forward, and if not, we go to a plan.
See.
I see.
We're down, we're close to X.
Okay.
So the question for town council is whether the, what's believed to be the date of house construction for the back house is adequate to establish that it was a right of way or an easement that predates nineteen fifty-four.
Correct.
Based upon the age of the house.
And the clarification of what's an easement versus a right of way, how different are they?
A right of way is a very particular type of easement that grants access. So if it were called on as an access easement on the deed, that would be the same as a right of way. But there are many classifications of easements, we've talked about several of them already. Yes, I just looked it up in the law dictionary.
That's a good, that's a good, that's a good question for the lawyer.
Okay. I don't think, do we need to extend this?
Yeah, you need to just, you need to further continue the public hearing and further extend the time to final action. To take them as a collective motion, just allocate the dates, that'd be great. So from, you want to go to the next meeting, or the one after that?
I would say the one after that.
Yeah, we need to ensure, I mean, let's give the attorney the time, because two weeks isn't always the correct.
So four eleven until five nine. And then the extension for the final action deadline would be four thirteen, twenty twenty-three to, let's say, five eleven. Do you have those?
I don't have any. Do I have a motion to the?
So move.
Two seconds.
Is there any discussion? In favor?
Aye, aye. You have to leave, I don't think I can be involved.
Right.
We'll have three that night.
Yeah, we'll still have three.
I'm just talking about who could else move.
On the next agenda, yeah, can I do discussion or no discussion?
You can do discussion, ask questions, the comments, assist the voting.
Can't vote, right, okay.
Unless you take advantage of the muller's role, watch the full video of the test that you watched, and then submit that full school to town clerk.
Well, no, but the problem is there were too many, remember?
Yes, there were too many.
There were two meetings.
Yes.
With substantial conversations, so I'm not able to do that. That's correct, yeah. Which I don't necessarily agree with, but that's the law.
Okay, onward. A and R, Wachusett Road.
Here we are.
Making the same mistake twice.
No mistake on this.
Oh, yes, there is.
Yeah. Totally not.
My opinion.
And I'd like to refer this to town council. Chair, with evidence from the Worcester County Commissioner had, had moved the road in nineteen fifty-six. Their documents associating as such.
Hi, Norm, if I may for a minute, can you guys just summarize what this particular A and R is for? What they're looking to do? Just for reference.
A and R for.
I think that would be fair.
First, Ridge Road.
Separate than what we already.
Yeah, we should probably let them do the presentation.
We are, why are we?
I'm just wondering if we could just have the presentation for us.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was gonna say. You gotta give Julian his chance to make money.
This is, this is a road, which per the town clerk is a public road right along here. I showed what, before, we had a plan that was signed into us by this planning board on this public road, the lots, this is, the dotted lines were the, were the actual lot lines. We reconfigured them, and we were able to create two, there was enough frontage to create two lots down, down in this area instead of this one big one. So we split it to create two. And that's what we have before you.
So five N and four N are the new lots?
This one got reshaped, so this line shifted like this.
Yeah.
And then this is the new lot. So there was, there was.
Oh, the pre, okay, thanks, Julian, I, I see if you're pre-saying ours.
Our way is, we straightened out, we made more of a parallel lot line, and we had enough frontage.
And you gave some pie back to the.
Yes, I took this one, yep.
Okay, good enough, nice.
So, yeah, I'll meet the zoning requirements for the area in frontage. So we took, we took three, reshaped one, and split one and two. So we created another house lot.
Isn't, let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
I thought, again, this is heard through the grapevine, that that, all that property that left had been resold, so that's still owned by Zottley's?
No. All of the property here was sold.
Help me look at the locus.
Slide it down. Here is, here's Ridge Road. Watch, Zottley owned a big piece of property here.
Yep.
That was sold.
Okay.
That's gone, it's got nothing to do with this site.
So that site's still all his property?
This is all, this is Zottley's property.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
I don't believe it's a road, but that's my, that's me personally on the, on the planning board.
I have, through the chair, it is a road, it's a public road, it's on the town clerk's list of public roads. That's not a question.
Actually.
On, it's not a question, it's been proven out as a town road. The town hired, we're back to the same discussion we had.
Yeah.
Joe Buckley hired Jarvis Engineering, or Jarvis Land Surveying, and they surveyed that road for the town. Not, I didn't do it, they did it for the town, because it's a town road. And Mr. Buckley started to, he got half of it, a little over half, already regraded with some color pipes.
On the direction of a, a single selectman telling him to do that?
No.
Oh, yes, it was.
On the direction of being the, I don't want to get into, into his job. He told me this was a town road, that's why he had the town pay for a survey. I said, I'm surveying this anyways, you'll see, it'll come out in the wash, because it's, it is what it is. He said, nope, I need to know.
Yes.
So I piggybacked that, and it says, as a recorded plan in the registry of deeds, Town Relent, Town Road, Wachusett Road.
Correct, because the planning board before that was advised that it was a town road, you are correct. I, I just, I don't agree with it.
And if you look at the town clerk's list of roads, it's in there. It's on that list from nineteen forty-nine. So I guess, I guess we can go the route that, if you don't feel comfortable signing it, I'll just bring it to the town clerk and let her sign it. We can play that game. If that makes you guys feel bad, but it's a town road, and that is frontage.
Is there any evidence that it is not a town road?
There's about a book of it that says it isn't a town road.
What, what book, the appraisal?
No, the nineteen, okay, oh, it did.
No, I, I, I am not going to. Let's put it this way, I, I am not. I cannot answer that question, because Mr. Soderberg is the one that brought it up, and we've had council meeting and come to the determination that this road was moved by the county commissioner in fifty-six, moved. Not abandoned, moved. It was picked up and moved over. That, when it was done that, the road.
How about the flat in Princeton, did that get moved too?
No.
With all the houses?
No, that stayed.
I think we can.
All right, anyways, that's, that's my deal, it's either going to our town council, or I will take it to a higher court, so.
No, I want town council again. This is town council. I am a taxpayer, and I really, I don't live here, but I own land. When town council comes up, I know it costs me.
I, I just wanted.
As long as every house we built.
I just want it done right.
Bring beautiful people to the town.
All right, he does.
To me, the question is, if the county, let's say, moved the road, it's something that physically.
It's still there.
No, this is, this, no. Gary Kelleher had it moved.
You're damn straight.
Gary Kelleher had it moved.
Right. They're going to the DOT, just having, having to be put on the chapter ninety-nine funds.
And it took them three times to get it in the right place.
Well, that's.
For you. So anyways, that's.
Yeah, I'm not gonna get excited about this.
I could.
Well, the question is, who owns the land that was Wachusett Road?
Zottley.
Zottley, yeah, that's what I agreed to too. When, when the road was moved, that land was returned to Zottley's as property, not as a road that is property.
As property.
Do we have drawings that show the road in different locations?
This town had it surveyed, and it says at the registry of deeds, Public Way, Wachusett Road, by Jarvis Land Surveying.
Wachusett Street became.
Town clerk record.
Wachusett Road became Wachusett Street.
Yeah.
So.
When they built that road, Kevin, they basically, again, this is just my understanding, I'm just, I don't want to get in an argument. Just explain, my understanding is when Wachusett Street, Princeton was built, the county commissioners abandoned this section of the road because Wachusett Street was going to be the way to Princeton. They left the dead-end street coming to Princeton to the dead-end property, but this road off of Ridge Road was abandoned, because now the access to Princeton was Wachusett Street off of fifty-six. Again, that's my understanding, I'm not saying it's right, wrong, or indifferent, it's my understanding.
I don't know if you got that information, but that's all right. They can only go by my first, most important place of information on the public road, town clerk's office. That's in the list. End of story.
When Mr. Buckley did the surveying of this, did he go by the original deed to indicate the placement of the road? Because that road was taken by the town, and then what happened with the county is a whole nother thing, and a whole nother question, but if it's the same location, and the town has not removed its interest in that property of what has been called Wachusett Road, I think it has to be that location. If the road, if on the other hand, the road was physically moved by the county, then the town has interest in the original location of Wachusett Road and not where the county moved it to.
Which was abandoned.
It wasn't abandoned by the road. Well, that was abandoned by the county.
Abandoned by the county, but the town did not maintain that road for over fifty years roughly.
That's true, but that's.
Shame on Zottley's. Gift to the town by the Zottley family.
If the surveyor certifies it, it's his stamp, and he goes by the deed.
By the deed.
He can't do it any other way, so it, it has to be where it is according to the records. By, because it's stamped by the, by the Land Survey. There's no other way to do it.
Zottley's deed had three parcels.
Zottley's.
Ridge Road.
Is on that road.
Split it this way, and the piece that was sold, that got sold just recently, was on the side of Ridge Road. Ridge Road then had Wachusett Road coming off of it. There's two parcels on each side, which are these two sides. He does not own the property in between the three trying, three rectangular portions of property. His deeds clearly defined, along the road, along the road, along the road. Yeah, all the way to.
Let me do Wachusett Road.
I believe it was in the nineteen twenties, or it might even have been earlier. So. There's no shape or form that Zottley owns any part of Wachusett Road. And it wasn't abandoned or discontinued, because if that had happened, then he would own to the center of it. And it didn't happen. So he doesn't own any of it, because it wasn't abandoned or discontinued.
What the hell is this property?
I'm asking the board to.
Forty-two Road.
Well, that's, we never update our.
Yeah, not what I would.
Basically, it says the whole parcel is.
Rather see here, then they could create some respect, right?
This whole thing has never been subdivided, did that ever get into? So has he been? I'm not saying this right, wrong, or indifferent. I'm not saying this right, wrong, or indifferent, but for the board, when I do 42 Ridge Road, which is the house right here, it shows that entire parcel.
What's the acreage of that?
Um, give me a quick second, Kevin. Get this... Document vision property.
You're killing me.
I'm killing it.
Yeah, let me go down.
Says 31... Oh, it's got it divided up. It says 31 acres, 4.2 acres, wooded and then hanged. So it's got it broken up into two different... So it says this parcel right here is...
There's actually bounds set.
What's that?
You realize? They actually set bounds on the, on the property. And it says Rutland on the boundaries of that surveyed piece.
So it's 36.72 is the answer for...
The left side or the whole thing?
The 42, the whole thing. So basically...
Does it include or not include the road? Has he been, you know, that's like you said, he has not been paying taxes. It stops, right? You got a left side, a right side.
Bring it up to the, to the locus. It shows the whole thing.
Here is Ridge Road right here. Wachusett Road goes to here and it's paved through Princeton. Princeton line is right here. These lots are on this end of this side. These lots exist on this side, recorded at the registry of deeds. This plan of this road is on a separate plan done by the Town of Rutland by a surveyor, signed, sealed, delivered, and recorded. And there's bounds set to define the boundaries of this as Wachusett Road. End of story. Because that is also in conjunction with the town clerk's list of public roads.
And that, when were those bounds put in?
Town of Rutland had them put in.
But when?
When they had it certified.
A year ago.
So just a year?
A year and a half ago, right?
Not just a year ago.
It was about a year and a half ago or thereabouts or something like that?
Begun part of the defining of Wachusett Road. That's what that was. I had nothing to do with that. So that's, I'm just abiding that.
Why was it, why was it even done?
Because, I don't know, I can't tell you.
Yeah, just Dick didn't get into it. It came out of the select board requirement, Kevin.
Yeah.
The select board requirement. It's not this...
Is it a fair statement, Tim, that the tax bill is not showing that road?
No, on the one that Julian's talking about on the left, the tax bill, you can see right here, it only goes to the edge of the road. Doesn't include the road. I can't, I'm trying to click on that one to see if that other one...
But that's kind of what I wanted to see on was that if he has been paying taxes on it, that's another bit of an issue, but he hasn't been. It doesn't appear that way.
No, it's at the edge of the road or, yeah.
Just give me one more.
No. 2010, there was no road shown. If you're running, man.
Aye.
That was when that was made.
I believe there's actually records from town councils saying this is a town road because the select board voted to stop maintaining it for whatever reason. But why would they vote stop maintaining if it didn't exist? So right now, it's not maintained. There's a no main, not road, unmaintained. Big sign right at the end of it. There's no question it's a town road. I don't know why they stopped maintaining it, but that's, that's a different, different board, different world, different set of issues, but...
Other roads in town that are maintained too.
So, but there was a lot of town council discussion on this road.
If it goes through here, we'll just take it some other place. I'll look the board through.
Okay, now, you say you wanted to go to town council?
I would.
With your question.
With, with the information that we have received, it's going to have Mr. Soderbergh put it all together for me.
We will get that information.
I'll get it. I'll make sure that he has it all.
Any thoughts from the rest of the board?
Has the owner looked at a subdivision option?
Excuse me?
A subdivision option? This is the only option he wants to do. Cleanest, easiest, legalist way.
I'm not hearing anything. I'm not hearing anything.
So the question before the board right now is these, changing the lots on the plan that, had we approved the other plan?
We did endorse the previous A and R.
And the question before us, before us now is changing the A and R? The question is not whether or not the road is...
Well, without the road, you can't have an A and R Maryland.
Yeah.
That's, that's the question. Because there's no frontage without a road.
Right, but we already approved it, didn't we?
Yeah, but the question of the existence of that road is now open.
Okay.
And the existence has been proven not just through this board, but through select board also. A lot of, quite a few meetings. And I mean, I got 200 feet of frontage, rectangular, look at them. I mean, these aren't my typical lots, actually.
I'll say that, yeah.
I gotta, I gotta go back to that and see if I can get another one. Because I think someone's going to get in trouble because that's not right.
It doesn't include the road either. So the road isn't, to your point, Kevin, hasn't been taxed.
Right.
At all. That just is information for the board I just want to put out because I've been trying...
Roads don't get taxed. Why would that?
No, if I may, I probably have several...
The public road, Town of Rutland doesn't pay a tax on a road.
They don't pay, nobody would pay a tax on a private road that's not owned by the town?
Private road, the owner would pay taxes.
Correct.
The public road, the town doesn't pay a tax.
No, 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 no.
This is, this is a public road.
Okay, Tamika says that the town may already have opinion from town council regarding this road.
I know they do. Oh, yeah, Tamika was at quite a few of those meetings.
And you can make that available to us?
Yes, yeah, I just, I have them. I have a whole file just to save us the going back to town council with the same question.
How about that for a first step?
Did they ever do a title search to make sure it went back far enough? And that's my opinion that they did not.
Would this be a reasonable start? Getting this information from...
I think that's a reasonable start. Sure, it's delay. Me, this is my problem. I think when we made this decision, and this is Kevin before you were on the board, I didn't think we had... Once I found out more about it, I didn't have enough information. I wasn't given all the information. I made a decision by just asking the clerk and it wasn't well-defined at the time. So I, me personally, I think I got hoodwinked. That's, again, my opinion. And I would, the information that came out past that, felt that we, we initiated a domino effect on this property that allowed it to just keep going.
Nope.
So...
Did the right thing, actually.
I, I don't believe I did, but that's my opinion.
Oh, this one?
My opinion. So I don't have a problem looking at the legal... I think I've, I think I've read them 12 times. It doesn't hurt to review them again.
I think so. We agree.
Dick, Dick, just look it up again. You can get it out, yes.
We're going as far as we can right now. Get that information.
That way, we don't pay any money to the attorney. We just grab what we've already paid for the review.
And continue to extend the...
Well, what about the new information that's been received? Does it matter factoring to this? Because that's the old information based upon what was understood at the time. What I believe you have is new, which is something with that. So how do you want to deal with that?
I think we should, this is my opinion, Norm. I think we should review the old stuff. And if we still think there's, based on the old stuff, another reason to go to town council, then we take what we have now with that old stuff and send it to town council. That's what I think is a, a good plan of action. That way, we just don't jump, go to town council without looking over all the documents.
So can I just ask one question for the chair? This meeting that Tamika was talking about, the select board meeting. Why would there have been, I think there were three meetings about them shutting the maintenance of that road down? Why would they have the power to stop the maintenance of a private road if that's where a private road? They can only have the ma, the power to shut down the maintenance of a town-owned facility. And that's in black and white. And there's a huge plaque in the front of the property that says "Not maintained", Wachusett Road. And there's two bounds that hit you in the eyes as you turn into the entrance. So that's there physically.
I can't speak to it.
I didn't do it and this is Zottley didn't do it.
I know for one of those meetings, correct me if I'm wrong, Julian, I think Shirin was on Zoom for one of those meetings.
I think they were all on Zoom.
So we could maybe go back to the recordings as well to see if those are helpful because I do believe Shirin participated in the conversation as well. I don't know if that's helpful or not.
So let's go one step further. Are you saying it's not a private road? You have friends that are on a private road, so you can still sign it. Either way, it gets signed. It meets your rules. I don't want it to say private because I'm not going to agree to that, but it does meet your rules in any shape or form.
Honestly, Julian, this is my opinion and I'm not speaking for the board. I think that whole road, half of it goes to one piece of property, half of it goes to the other. It never existed.
But it doesn't because it wasn't abandoned or discontinued. It doesn't do it. As you just crossed that property line, there's two, there's a brand new, there's a relatively new house on...
On the Princeton side.
They didn't just shut the road.
They also maintained that road up to Princeton with, with asphalt constantly. Up until the surveyor and Joe were in there, there was trees growing in the middle of that road.
There were trees. There were trees falling in the road. There were no trees in the middle of the road. I have a 1987 pickup truck. That's another parking lot that I drove up and down that road when I first met Mr. Zottley. And I had a chainsaw in the back and said, "I could take this out of the way."
Mr. Mason seems to disagree with you and I...
Yeah, his cables all over, which are no longer there.
Correct. Anyway, I don't want to get in an argument.
It's a public road. Proven through many, many nights of, of select board meetings, in the end, they stopped the maintenance. They couldn't do any more than that. That's all their power was, is that they had control to say, "We're not maintaining it" because there's no houses on it. That was actually said. And I said, "That's, that's fine for today, but it's not going to last forever." So it's a public road. We have frontage, we have area, we meet your rules. I'm asking for the board to endorse this plan.
Well, that was a direct question, so I'll entertain a motion. We'll see what passes or fails.
I have a question. So he provided all the evidence pointing towards the fact of it is a road. The only thing I've heard the board say is, "I don't like it."
No, we said there's evidence from the county commissioners that say it's not a road. It was moved.
So if I may, and I wasn't in all the meetings that Tamika was in and Mr. Vertruba was in on the select board side of things, but it appears to me, sitting here tonight, at the time, the select board had a certain bit of information. They looked at documents and they come up with their decision. And that was a year ago, two years ago. As of today, it appears as though there's more information that has been brought to light and should be shared, I think, with the board before we make a decision on this. That's my opinion.
I think I should point out that all the information you've spoken about, about the county, was brought up in the select board meetings. So they had that information as part of their consideration. This is, this is not new.
But we haven't seen it. I'm going to suggest that you agree to an extension of time. I will continue this.
What do I need to bring to the next meeting? That will assure me. I, I, I'm not the owner, so I have to go back to the people I work for. Last time, last me, last plan was going a totally different direction than it just went. So what are you looking for other than the town clerk saying this is a town road and the select board documentation saying it's a town road and testimony of myself being involved in this and having a drawing, a plan certified by a registered land surveyor, referencing a plan by another registered land surveyor that this is the town road?
I don't think we're asking for anything more from you.
So then, what else? I just presented everything you need to say, "I have frontage, I have area, this has endorsement." It's a no approval required and you are asking for approval. I'm, it's like I'm asking you for approval. I'm not asking for any approval because I don't need it. I have shown you everything I need. This no approval required part is just getting out of hand on, wait a minute, what do we do to find out?
That's why that book was written, Julian, by somebody, because this was basically a free-for-all for years in this state. That's why a certain governor commissioned that book to be written and case law be put into it. So boards like this would have an opportunity to see that there are other issues.
So what other issue are we looking for here?
I, I want to look over, I want to see what the town council had to say. I don't have that. That's what I want to read. And you could be right. I read that and I'm like, "Well, there's no, there's no argument, it's done with." But I haven't seen that yet.
I would really like to comment on your question or your comment. I've been on this board for 13 years and I have two meetings left, this one and the next meeting. And in those 13 years, I have not seen this board make a judgment, a recommendation, whatever, based on personal opinion of the board.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. I said, "I'm just trying to wrap my head around it."
Wrapped your head around it?
Yeah.
It is, it is definitely one of the more complicated problems that we've addressed.
Through the board, I have one more question on, the first time this came before you. Can I give the same exact information?
It's still there.
Norm?
This is the only thing that you got back there.
No, it's not. This wasn't state law. So this...
It's a proposed state law.
Proposed state law. So I look at that right there versus that right there. Right? That comes down right underneath that.
Interesting.
Julian, if I may ask?
Yeah.
I ask a second. Revised Lot 2B. Where's that driveway?
That's the one that's going to be in estate lot.
How do you get to it?
From Ridge Road. Right here. This almost meets your, at your estate lot.
Well, I just wasn't sure. Okay, so that is?
That is 2B.
Again, I just can't read, you know, this freaking goddamn print on these things.
So that's going to be in estate lot.
So that's, okay, that's one continuous lot.
That was.
That's, okay. I just want to make sure of that before. That would be a question for next time.
That's 2E, okay, I see that. I can't really read this.
So did you eliminate two lots on Ridge Road?
That 2B used to wrap around and go to Wachusett. So we had a lot of extra land.
No, you had two...
That's what was signed. That's, that's the original plan, right?
Right, which showed 2B coming out onto Ridge Road.
It was a big out.
Yeah, that came out onto Ridge Road.
Yes.
Oh, that's a good point.
This is, this was there.
And then you put a lot line.
So we just cut this off like this and took this extra land and reconfigured this section and created what we have got before you. So this will be in a state lot. The line just went straight up.
So there's three lots that you're changing, 4N, 5N, 6N?
Three lots were changeable, we're only creating one new one. We reshaped the others.
Yeah, yeah.
We only created, we created one new out of them.
Correct, thanks. Yeah, I missed that, good catch, Kim. I didn't, I, that a state lot wrapped all the way around and now it's actually got a lot line on it. I didn't catch that.
And I showed the old line so that there'd be no question on what was there before.
Yeah, no, I missed that, Julian.
It's a tool that you guys like to see, so.
Yep, 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 you put that lot line on the back for 6N.
So the plan that Dave just had up there was the original plan, which I was just going to ask the question, when I first came years ago, and I was charged with, why should we sign this? Town clerk says this is a town road. Lots of 200 feet of frontage, minimum acre and a half. That's all the criteria I need to show to this board. It's in the town clerk's records that this is a town road. And then it went further, because a lot of whatever, and it went into the select board's hands on the maintenance of the road. And they said, we're going to stop maintenance because there's no houses down there right now. Save some, some money to the town. And Mr. Buckley said, okay, I'll stop what I'm doing. Because he's about a little over halfway down. Re-gravelled, put a couple culvert pipes in, did some tree clearing. He just said, no more maintenance. Okay. And that's where it stands. No shape or form did it say it's not a town road. It's just a non-maintained at this moment, town road.
Does the select board need to vote to remaintain it? Or is that, would that be done through road acceptance?
No, that's just.
So the select board would have to vote to start maintaining the road again?
Yep.
Could the select board vote that down?
I guess they could do whatever they want.
So at the end of the day, all this done, the select board votes down to maintain the road.
All those people will be plowing their own roads, that's all.
Well, you have to make a road.
There is a road.
Pavement?
Not pavement.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at, is that the select board turns it down.
It'll be a gravel road that everybody's going to take care of. That's not going to happen. That's going to, it's going to get to a point where the town will maintain that. It's a public way. Once a couple houses go down there, it's going to become a town road. They, they.
So that will stay a gravel road, or does it need?
No, right now, it's, it's proposing, it's existing a gravel road. And as far as the owner today, it's going to be a gravel road.
So it will stay a gravel road?
Just like Sassillon or Brittenell.
The town is not going to be responsible. This is just in my mind, my question, it's not.
Well, they are responsible.
It's not going to impact my decision, but I'm just curious, is the town required to rebuild the rest of that road?
I, at this moment, they chose to do no more maintenance. And the reason was there were no houses down there.
I understand that, Julian, but that's not my question. My question is, if this, and this is.
Oh, who's going to build, who's going to fix the road up?
Who's going to build the road? And this is not.
The road is there, the road is passable. I would say the people who build the houses there are going to probably put in there to get it to a better stage, or they're going to petition the select board that I just bought a piece of property.
No, I'm just, I'm just curious about that.
But that's.
And it wouldn't have any.
Different group of.
It will not have any impact on my decision on this discussion, but I wondered that for a while. Thank you.
Yep.
Marilyn, the other thing, just to give you some knowledge, Joe commissioned Stantec, a engineering firm, to come up with a list of all the roads in town and a priority of how they should be, you know, built and costs. I, I, that's a question I'm going to ask Joe, was this road part of that Stantec review? And again, it's, it's not, I just, just curious.
It's not pertinent to this discussion, but just out of curiosity.
Okay, good enough.
So where do we stand here?
Well, I'm just going to ask again, are you agreeable to an extension so that we can review that additional information?
My only hesitation is that I'm not understanding what you're looking for. So that we don't come back two weeks from now and we're right back to a two-hour discussion over the same exact items that don't pertain to why this should be endorsed as a nonapproval.
We're, we're looking for something that's going to give us increased clarity that, number one, the road exists, that it is a town road, and that it's where the plan says it is.
And we want to review Tamika's.
And I don't mean this as, to be a wise guy, but the plan before this that was signed by most of you guys, this is just an alteration of that original plan. So the road does exist. The road, all those things did exist a couple of years ago. Nothing, nothing's changed.
Additional information has come by.
More solid that it is a town road, because town council did not write to the.
That's just what we have to see.
Saying, this is not a town road. They said this is a town road.
Well, that's what we need to see.
But you can stop the maintenance if you please. And that was just an unadmitted way of, of causing more issues to the Zott family. But that's a different board, and I want to stick with this board over this issue.
We don't have that before us.
Can I say, if this plan's on record, it dictates. You got, you can't.
Two plans on, on record.
You can't like say that it doesn't, it's not there. I mean, it dictates. What if he deeds it out? It's, I mean, you can't, you can't change things that are on a road that's already on a plan, that's already recorded at the registry of deeds. There's no more clarity necessary, but, I mean, I, I'm not, I don't want to speak for Julian, but it, it, I don't understand if it's already on record. Maybe Kevin could clear it up a little bit, I mean, he's PE, but I mean, this is on record. And you went to a lawyer's office and said, I need to deed this lot out. He'd deed the lot out, and he referred to the plan. And it would be gone. Then how could you change the road then? I'm just telling you, I see every day.
And the only reason why that hasn't happened yet is because it's in chaplain, and he's waiting for it to run out of chaplain. And that's in the process, that's already in the works. That's the only reason why there aren't houses on some of those lots.
Am I right? You're 100% right, I was going to say, because he referred to a plan, and indeed, it always refers to a plan.
You know, not to beat a dead horse, but we all know what happened with this.
If y'all want to vote, fine, I'm, I'm okay. I know my vote already, so if you want to go that route, that's fine.
We have to have a motion in order to vote.
I'd like to have more information.
So it's back in my court. I'm just going to say, I have no more information to provide. So this information that you're looking for is all public record, I assume. I've given you for the record, it's a town, town road for the town clerk, town road for, actually, the board of selectmen, town road for a plan on record that says town of Rutland, Wachusett Road, and town road because of a plan previously endorsed by this board for the same property. So I will give you, I will vouch to give you time to the next meeting. And hopefully, at that meeting, you read this stuff that we're talking about, and this will be endorsed.
And do the chair. Julian, I wasn't, my opinion is, I'm not looking for anything from you. You provided everything you need to provide. I just want to review the documents that Tamika has.
It's my, my only job is to provide you the information, no approval required, so that you'll endorse it. And I just failed. So that's my problem. But that's, we'll move forward to it, and I'll sign this, and we'll come back to it in two weeks. Give you the time you need. We want this to go forward, and all Mrs. Zott has done is what he feels is my right him to do. And two weeks isn't going to hurt nothing.
Okay. So motion to extend to what dates?
So first off, look, continuance of the public hearing from 4/11 tonight until April 25th. And then, an extension of the constructive grant, final action deadline from April 18th until.
Because if they did, there would be houses there.
April 27th.
So moved.
Just so, I'm, I'm understanding this, you're looking for any review by town council? Or you just want to get the information that's already been submitted and review it? You're reviewing that information as well that you have? Do you want that distributed to the board?
I've got two here.
So you want that information, what's already been discovered here?
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
May I get some of the stuff?
See, I have a motion to the here, second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I want to be first on the agenda at the next meeting. I'm the one. I'm not signing, I'm the number 50.
Okay, next item?
Thanks, Norm.
Hilltop Estates?
Okay, Nick, move over just a tad, please.
Tamika, did you get my extension?
Oh, I didn't hear you say that, thank you.
Three, three A's and one M.
I said please.
Are we open?
Uh, yeah, let's see if Dave's got everything done. Everything signed, sealed, and delivered?
Signed, sealed, delivered.
Yeah, all signed and signed.
All right, so this is a continuation of the hearing at 6:45 PM. Gets a little late. Hilltop Estates continued from 3:28, 23, on a definitive subdivision, Hilltop Estates. I guess what I can go into to start out the meeting is, we had a, a meeting between two planning board members, Mr. Quinn and Mr. Blair's representative. We could go last Thursday to discuss some items that we talked about earlier, about all of the waivers that were included. A high-level takeaway from that meeting is that the planning board members, along with the help of Mr. Quinn, had come up with a couple of main items that we were looking for to help move this, this process along. The first item that we come up with is, we wanted an attempt at the storm water management. Kevin, help me out.
Storm water is a policy.
Storm, yeah, the policy, basically, as initially, one of the waivers was to basically not follow the storm water management plan. And we had said in that meeting, we would like the applicant to at least make an attempt at that storm water plan throughout the entire project. Thanks, thanks, since I was having a prank death with projects, so. And then we would say, we would refer that back to Mr. Quinn to look at. And if in some cases it didn't meet the 80% requirement, then we would take a recommendation from him and put that in front of the board to talk about. The second item that we came up with is to make it fair, since, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was nine properties on there, or potentially nine properties. That we would come up with a HOA that, to have a coined phrase, have some teeth to it. So that if there was any maintenance required on the, on the private road or anything within that project, that all nine owners with their deeds would have a financial requirement to fix anything in there. So again, that's more of a high level. It's, we didn't have anything worked out, we were just, our typical HOA is put $50 or some, some small amount into an HOA. We were looking for more of a legal document. And again, that's for the, the board to come up with. The third item that was, the exceptions that we wanted to have removed was the bounds. We prefer to have bounds on all property. And I think, Marilyn, those were the only, those were the big three that we came out of the meeting.
Big three. No, I agree with you. I think that personally, that a lot of the waivers that are here, and just for the audience, there's a few people here, there are actually 14 waivers, which is a lot for a big project. But this project is kind of a combination between a common driveway and a subdivision, which has created some issues for the board. Many, the first, out of the 14, the rest of them are pretty standard. For example, no sidewalks, street lights. And the, what the major issues, as Tim stated, are the three that he sent. The Home Owners Association of Monuments. And the biggest one in my mind is the storm, storm water. And I think it was a very productive meeting.
Did you have a discussion about the angle?
Yes, yes. And Kevin had basically mentioned that the 8% to 10%, because of the leveling at the bottom, a lot of roads in Rutland exceed that, 10%. And he didn't consider it excessive in Rutland because of, we went from a 3% to a 4% leveling at the end. So he said that wasn't, I'll coin his word, wasn't unreasonable. So I have to go with my civil and.
If I may?
Yep, go ahead, please.
The thing with the, with the grading is, the road grade is reasonable. You do have a requirement, there's a 3% leveling zone at the bottom. They've increased it to four. It's a marginal change, but the, the thing that the board would want to look at is, if they, if you, if you require a flatter leveling zone, it increases the excavation. One of the things that they're, that's appealing to them and maybe to the town is not digging in a enormous canyon. So by having a little bit of a moderate slope and a little bit, little bit of relief in the leveling area, you end up with less excavation requirements, which I think may be in the board's interest.
And Dick, I was, the reason I like that is, I have less runoff from the properties onto the road of water. If I, if I'm not digging into a canyon, I'm actually keeping it up. And me personally, I was sacrificing two degrees of slope as opposed to two degrees on each property of water coming down in the road, making ice sheets in the winter. Kevin talked me into, I shouldn't say talked me into, he gave me more of a warm, fuzzy feeling of, of the design that, that was being, had been updated, I guess is a better way to say it, updated from what we had in the past, so.
I think you have a comment.
I was, I wanted to finish, get Dick there, I was going to go see if he had anything.
Do Pete.
Go ahead, Pete.
Well, I, I have a question about which storm water standards. ConCon was recently schooled by the DEP about Massachusetts storm water standards, which are different from the EPA storm water standards. And so my question is, what storm water standards are you talking about not necessarily needing?
I will go to my expert in charge.
Massachusetts.
Massachusetts. That's what we call out in our subdivision regs, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And if I'm not mistaken, Pete, that was a requirement of 80%?
Removal total suspended solvents, yeah.
Of 80%.
Actually, there's, there's numerous standards, there's, there's nine major standards.
Okay.
But there's three primary standards that are the ones that challenge it for, for any, any engineer to comply with.
And that's where we said, with the two at the bottom, if you can at least make an attempt and bring that attempt to you to look at, and then you to give us recommendations, if it doesn't meet those nine conditions, but there's an attempt at it, and you can give us some advice, we might be able to move forward with that. I said I would, I would, I would look at it and move forward, as opposed to just saying no, right off the bat. saying no, right off the bat. That was my opinion. And I think Marilyn had, had joined me in that opinion too, that as long as they make an attempt to do an engineering, and Kevin's comfortable with what the engineer solution is, then as a board member, I could move forward with that. I just, the, the thing that bothered me the most in that meeting was, again, this is what, the information I had at the time, that there was no attempt to do anything. And I didn't buy into that at all. That was my no-win scenario for me, you gotta at least give me a, give me a college try. That's it.
Stormwater, was it, was it county drain, or was it inlets, was it drop, drop inlets for drainage?
Well, originally, county drainage called for.
Yeah.
And the plan had, your country drainage, the, your standards called for country drainage on roads at 5% or less steep. And the road originally was 11.5% coming down to Brenton. They moderated that to 10%, but at the top of that 10% grade, they put a pair of catch basins in, and they capture that water and they send it off-road. So they kind of take the country drainage off the table for the, for that bottom part of the road, which is...
The bottom part, yes.
Correct.
Yeah.
Which is good. And the other thing they did, which we had, had concerns with originally, was that the water was just originally being deposited at the bottom of the road. So when Carl Holgren was, was here, he, he said, you gotta do something with that water. So they put it into catch basins, and they run across Brenton, discharge it to the land that, that Blair Development owns, across the street.
Okay.
Which is a good management of the water, because that would have been terrible in Brenton to have that water. Delivered to the street.
Okay. Kevin, you had a question? I just, a couple of, just as, I know we already mentioned, I'm not gonna be able to vote on this one because I missed some of the meetings, but I did visit the site with, with Mr. Blair in regards to the 11.5% versus the 10%. We kind of walked the site a little bit, and one thing that I, I would say in favor of this is the fact that there's nine house lots with plus or minus 10 acres each. In my opinion, that's, that's something that I think this town should be looking more at. We're not cramming in 25 houses in there, and my fear is that if this was not approved from Mr. Blair, that he would then go subdivision and, instead of nine houses, we've got 30 houses.
Or, or, or more. Driveways.
Or several driveways. Well, that was the original design.
Right.
Was all separate thousand-foot-plus driveways. And, and to your point, Kevin, that's why I, I, after Kevin presented, didn't think getting that road to 8% was gonna be beneficial with those large lots, because now I've got canyons coming into the roads, which again, first thing I think of is my neighbors across from me on Brenton with those steep roads, and I've seen those vehicles slide right down in the winter, because it gets, it just gets too slick, and if they don't take care of it, that's a, a huge pitch, they'll just slide down. So again, I, if we can overcome those three issues, I, I use the word, I greenlight it, but I don't want to say that I want to, that's me personally, it's not the board.
So, we had some discussion today, Kevin and I, and I think we have a fairly good workable plan to take care of the stormwater.
Okay.
Monuments, that's easy. The HOA is, we use the same one we have for Glenwood Place Extension, it's exactly that. You guys had me put that together for Glenwood Place Extension because of those four lots at the end, they have to maintain it, they have to plow it, they have to do all of those things, so it's really a private road. And we can, we take a look at that when it's on, you know, it's on record, so probably the, the right HOA to use for that. So that's easy. So it's just the stormwater, and I think really, I mean, Kevin can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we got a pretty good idea of what will work. As far as TSS removal, it's just storm siphons, that's easy. I mean, but, but it's, it's where we're gonna put the water and how we're gonna, you know, slow it down and move it, and, you know, those things that, that I think is, is of concern, and I, I think we got a pretty good plan to move.
You guys can work that, again, like I said, as long as, and again, this is my opinion, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, as long as we can get to a point where I'm, where Kevin's comfortable with what we got, and we're not going to put more water out on the road, or, I'm okay with that. I, I, I get it that 80% removal and some of the other ones would be nice, but I, I think this is a project that could go forward, and again, it's, I, I agree with Kevin, having larger lots, making this workable, putting some teeth into an HOA, so the, the people buying the deed, buying the houses, they know that on their deed, and I know it's, it's set to be 20 years, but if it's 10 years, 15 years, somebody down the road, maybe they sell the house and somebody else buys it, knows what they're getting into. Knows that there's gonna be a maintenance cost for that area, and we can't pull the six of the nine people decide, well, I'll do it, and the other three said no, well, then at that point, with that HOA, they have, what's the word I, they have the potential for liens or bonding or something like that against that property to be able to make sure everybody pays for that maintenance. So, that, that was it.
Perfect. I'm actually thinking of gating it, you know, like, I honestly, I mean, you know, those are 10-acre lots, I mean, I'm talking big, big money houses up there.
If you can talk somebody.
Yeah. Tell me, Steve, go on.
So, the, the other thing we wanted to bring up to the applicant is that we can't, we as a board, can't give you sufficient guarantee that, because this needs...
Supermajority.
A supermajority vote.
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
It's three.
Let me rephrase that. It needs, it needs three, it needs a majority vote, and there's really, if I'm not mistaken, only three that can vote on this, and Marilyn, we won't get this through by the next meeting. So...
Sure we will. Have faith.
Okay. Let me, let me do the Murphy thing. I'll have faith, but plan for the worst-case scenario. Kevin had brought some options up of what we potentially could do, and if I remember right, one of them was withdraw, then resubmit with the new board?
Right, just resubmit with the new board when, when the board's recosted.
What's that?
Resubmit or just re-advertise?
A total resubmission.
Yeah, you got a whole resubmission.
Yeah.
So what's that cost?
You, yeah. Look, I don't believe we, the board collected the total fee, so I would probably have that conversation offline.
Okay.
Although we are still waiting for a replenishment.
Yeah, I got that, I forgot it, but I'll bring it up tomorrow morning.
I would think, I mean, if shares are equal to the way you did it before, then...
Yeah, totally, I, I would think this is more of a technical...
So can I just...
Go ahead, jump in, Dick.
So what's happening here right now, you only have three members who can sit, one has to recuse, and then there was an issue with meetings and so forth. So Marilyn is, is, this is her last term, so she's finishing up on the 25th. We think that's an aggressive schedule to have the stormwater plan revised and looked at by then. But, as well as an issue, so the thought was give you an option?
Well, why don't we make that decision next meeting?
Okay. We just wanted, I wanted to put it out to this meeting, Clay.
No, no, but, you know, if, if, I mean, we, we still have next meeting, and then if we do withdraw, then Kevin can vote.
That's what I was gonna say, if there's a resubmission, I'd be able to vote. Correct, yes, and that, that was, that was the other thought process.
Marilyn, say this, if I, if I withdrew tonight and resubmitted tomorrow, can we still vote on it on the 25th? I don't have the right board, never mind. But I still have, it'd get him down.
Yeah, because the resubmission would give you four members to vote instead of, instead of two, plus a, we don't know who's gonna get elected.
I get that.
So...
Is there a rule to that? Can, so they, they won't be able to vote?
No, 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 they would be able to vote.
The issue is, if Marilyn is off the board and you continue it to May 9th, you only have two members who can vote, and you need three. You need to firm a vote of all three to prevail.
But if I withdrew it tonight?
Yes.
And put it back in tomorrow, then Kevin can vote?
Uh, we'd have to advertise it. You wouldn't be, you'd be in the May, we have to advertise it.
You'd be in the May anyway?
So you'd have a new...
So let's wait and make the decision next week.
I'm fine with that. All I wanted to do, Clay, was Kevin had brought up a good point of, of put that option out to you.
I appreciate it.
Well, you think about it, and, you know, we don't have to make a decision tonight, so.
So right now, we'll go to the next meeting?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask you, if there's no other information, I know, Kevin, you're, you hadn't finished up the report that you were gonna be working on.
Correct. I have to see their stormwater report anyway.
Okay.
So I stood down on the stormwater review because they, they had redesigned a lot.
Okay, that's fine. Any other information that Julian or Clay, you need to present that goes to Kevin?
Not right, not, not tonight, no.
I'll, I'll do my typical, any questions from the board where we're at right now? And I'll move to the public. Is there anybody online? I, I guess I'll ask for anybody on Zoom or out in the audience, any questions? I see a hand up, I think, do I, don't, I, I'm at, I'm at a, I'm at a 60-degree angle, so I'm not seeing...
I can't, I don't see that, but, no hands up.
No hands up? Okay, thanks. So without any more information, I guess I'm gonna ask for a continuance, motion for a continuance.
From 4/11 till 4/25?
Yes. Oh, no, I don't need to, I'm sorry, I don't need to ask for a continuance, we just need to...
You just need to vote it.
Yeah.
Acknowledge the date, and that's the motion.
Yep.
And then also, in the agreement to extend the final action deadline from 9/18 to, to...
10?
Uh, 10, uh, 10, 10-3?
10-3. Do I have a motion?
Second.
No, okay. I made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion, I thought it was me.
You said...
And I can second.
I'll ask for any discussion. Kevin, you can have discussion if you want. Okay. Anybody else? All right, let's take a vote. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Excellent. We don't have our, our secretarial staff, so, want me to write this down?
I, I...
Get it off the recording.
Oh, oh, thanks.
Was that dated the 25th?
Um, it was 25th, April 25th, a Tuesday.
That's right.
So with that continuance, after my signature, I will relinquish the chair. Come back in!
Here you go.
Okay, Captain, the chair is yours, I'm done commanding.
Thank you, guys. See you tomorrow. Very much. Yeah, I get the money, I already got the money. I don't stay up till midnight. I think David said I was gonna be a six. So I was gonna be checked up tonight.
I like the whole...
Oh, perfect, fine, guys.
I'll come to you, I need to wash, my legs are killing me. I'm not...
It's another reason, you know? I don't like it. It's like saying, why is it top and bottom, that's your close call?
I took my job, I get my seatbelt.
Kevin, thanks for coming. Yep. The board's all set with me.
And, and you, and we're on Carl prices, right?
I'm kidding.
I don't want that owner price, I don't want that. I'm kidding. You're worth your weight in gold. And again, Kevin, thanks for all the help on Thursday, that was, that was huge for me.
So I forgot you can launch it. You don't need to.
I don't need to.
Don't need me to.
Fuckin' on, man.
Ready to continue?
I'm good.
Actually, Mr. Chair, just give me a second, I, I, this packet was so large, I couldn't scan it as one continuous document, so, there's a packet, two of which I have to access.
Yeah, it took a long time. Her cousin had it too, must be a virus. Actually, I had two cousins. Hung out for a long time.
And you guys are leaving tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
You're okay, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's up for me, I'm on 1/4 line, so, oh, that's that, is that that common driveway, those two pieces of property?
I give it to you.
That has the septic issue?
That's it.
Oh, yeah.
They may subchange those, it's kind of...
What are you doing there?
No, I'm not finding the shear button on this.
You're trying to grab some water.
That's not the issue, the issue is, is the shear button for this. Again, Peter, pardon me, any chance?
Dave, did that work? I just changed the screen's shear setting.
Is that, I don't know, I gotta get back to it.
Okay. There it is, thank you, sorry for the delay.
Okay, we have a, uh... Public hearing floor in the state lot, we did not open the public hearing at the last meeting.
Right, there was a forum issue last time, so, after request to the applicant, the applicant wanted to have at least four members, so it postponed a couple nights.
Okay, so open the hearing for special estate, special permit for an estate lot located on 335 on MacGusson Road.
Mr. Chair, do we need to grab Tim? Do we need to grab Tim, because I need four votes?
You do need your, all your members, yeah, where's...
Yeah, here he is, thank you.
Said to grab some water. So...
So, actually, pardon me one second, this was just postponed, so no testimony was taken, so everybody's eligible to vote.
Okay.
Just for point of information.
Thank you. So this is a special permit estate lot application for a single lot. The A and R was endorsed a few, a couple years back, included in a packet, it's also recorded with the registry of deeds. The lot itself is just under 15 acres with over 100 feet of frontage, and the applicant is asking for a special permit estate under the estate lot, special permit zoning.
Can you repeat that, please? It was, how many acres?
Just under 15, roughly, uh...
The estate lot is just under 15?
Correct.
Okay, I got it right, thank you.
If you count the access strip, it's actually over 15.
I'm good. Thanks, Ace, man.
Whereabouts is this?
So this is on Palm, MacGusson, the A and R was endorsed, this is Greg Goldsmith, up towards the, up towards Route 68. Uh, there are...
Near Campbell Street?
Yes.
Across the street?
Yeah.
The one that's got it all wide open?
No, it's to the south of that. There's four new houses on the frontage lots, and the owner of the land is gonna build, is hoping to build his house on the backland under a single estate lot that's 15 acres.
Is that where Stevie Glot's been in?
Yes, exactly.
Minor built the ones up front?
Uh, a few different people.
Okay, but he was one, right, is that?
It was Minor.
The white house or the black?
My father did two, and then Steve Lynch did one.
Okay, all right.
And so, this is where Stevie's access road is, is the proposed driveway.
I don't see anything that jumps out at me, Dad. 15 acres is way above the five that are required. This is a good night, we got a whole bunch of 10-acre lots and 15-acre lots, how do we keep this trend going, people? And it's 50 feet on, or 50 feet on the frontage?
Oh, 102.12.
Oh, perfect. And the setback for the house is 200?
Yeah, it's, it's not on the recorded plan, but it's, it's on the site plan, it's plenty wide enough.
Okay, thanks.
And we've got verbiage down there, notice, I think it's, cannot be further subdivided?
Yeah, that was...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
That's on the A and R.
You know, the reason not to pull the special permit is they only lasted two years, so he didn't...
Yep, yep, yep.
Want to go through the process at the time of the A and R.
Yeah. So, where, where, I guess, Dave, help me out, where is the drawing for the special permit? So, where, I guess, Dave, help me out, where is the drawing for the special permit?
Well, the drawing for this, what do you, what do you mean drawing? The lot, the plot, plan for the special permit?
Yes.
Well, it shows in two locations, so this is the A&R that created the estate lot proposed, subject to the special permit, so the A&R created the lot shape.
Yep.
The special permit authorizes the use. So, this is the A&R plan here, and then this is the plan showing the rough approximation of the structure of the lot. And then there would be building plans submitted as a separate issue during the permitting stage.
Yeah, 'cause I know that we'd gotten a little tough on our, because our, by law, require that setback on our drawings. Obviously, when that one came through, we didn't, didn't rough anybody up, but you show it here, so I'm fine. I just, I wanted to make sure that...
That was the reason for submitting the site plan, to show compliance with the special permit.
Thanks, Mark, I appreciate it, yeah, thanks.
There's also additional findings, a fact that were submitted, which we can show if you like, that go through the requirements one by one that pertain to the estate lot in terms of...
I just wanted, 'cause what we, as we got into more estate lots in town, there was the, the bylaw that said you had to show the setback.
Yeah, no, I get it.
And some of them didn't have that on the early ones, and we were just trying to make sure everything was fair for everybody going forward, so...
Yep, that's why we submitted this.
Okay, good, thanks.
Any further comments? Any comments from the public?
I just, just in regards to estate lots in general, and David, maybe you can help or somebody else can, is there, or has there ever been? Talk about the amount of estate lots allowed per year or in our bylaws? And again, I'm just, I'm just questioning because moving forward in this, and Mark and I have spoken about things, and I've talked with a lot of different people about a lot of different things, and I'm not opposed. I just am curious if that's ever been discussed before as a potential, or if it's even, would ever be allowed? I don't, if it's A&R, the A&Rs aren't under growth management by law, by the, the land court found, ruled against Rutland in that one, a growth management, so since the estate lot is out of an A&R, would that be grandfathered, Dave, into...
Well, the estate lot is for the use, the A&R is to create the lot shape. So the question is whether or not there could be a limit on the number of estate lots, special permits, over the course of a given year.
Oh.
As there is now with the number of building permits that can be limited to 36 per year, this would be a limit within the limit. We, I don't recall any discussion on it. I think we'd have to first, I think in this case, I would advise the board to see if that would be something that's legal that the board could consider? Because that's a question I haven't seen any coverage on. Right now, it is valid to limit the number of building permits per year, that's valid. Whether it's valid to limit a particular type of housing, I'd have to look into that.
I'm just, I get it, it just came up.
If the board wanted to pursue, and I would recommend in this case, to get the answer whether or not it's a valid thing to pursue first, before going down the road of a potential zoning change or otherwise, just to know that it would be something that would hold up.
I think, Kevin, would be a simple question to ask the building inspector, how many estate lots a year does he, he give building permits to, so we get an idea for that? I mean, if it's six or eight a year, that doesn't seem like a lot to me. If it's 15 or 20, then maybe that's something to look into.
Well, certainly, it's, it's more in the five to six area.
That was my guess.
That's the typical number per year. It's not much more than that.
Yeah, if you're looking to create open space, estate lots are really a good answer, because you're creating large lots.
No, and I, again, I'm just, yeah, just asking those questions.
The way you're asking the question, I would think you'd almost want more of them, rather than less.
Yes.
Because as soon as you limit a, an estate lot, the next option is a subdivision.
Right, and then in regards to, for every estate lot, there could also be six other frontage lots.
If you look at this piece of land right here, this could be probably 10 house lots.
Right, correct. Right, and I, not disagreeing with the benefit and all that, it's just up for that, for that dialogue, for every one estate lot, is there potentially six other frontage lots?
Yeah.
Well, this one, you got enough room, Mark, that you could bring a road in there.
Right, this would be a thousand-foot dead end road with...
Yeah, with cul-de-sac and houses on.
15 lots and a few lots on Palmigusset.
And if you want to be a good guy, you could do 40B and make a lot of houses in there.
No, but even, even by right, this would be, this would be 10 house lots, probably 12.
But because of this, that's why I love it.
Oh, and I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with it, it was just, it was just a question, question, whatever. But Dave, I guess that wouldn't hurt, just for the board's information, to ask a building inspector, if there's any way you could, if he's got a computer, just a state lot, I don't know if they can pull that off of that permitting program, that, that computer program they've got, I don't know.
I'm sure we could track that down if the board wants that information.
This is okay with everybody? I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea to have that info. These types of big flag lots, rainbow lots, all these different options, if there's discussion that should be had on limiting some of them. Maybe it's not estate, maybe it is a rainbow lot, or, I call them octopus lots, where we get in front of Julian, admitted, he goes, this is, he's almost, you know, he's making lots that aren't like this.
I like the estate lot, you know, to how many they are, because to me, it is classified as cannot be further subdivided, and, and in that, if they have the acreage, you know, which is gonna be minimum five...
Right.
Yeah, up, so, to me, for, that's saving a lot of open space. Exactly.
So, that's my opinion, Norm, I think we...
Yeah, we've had a couple pieces that would have been roads if it weren't for the estate laws on it.
Beautiful. Any further discussion? Need a motion to close the hearing?
Also move. Second.
Any discussion? In favor? You like, have a motion to grant the special permit?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We didn't have any norm, oops, sorry. We didn't have any special conditions or anything we need to put on this, just our standard boilerplates?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, perfect, just wanted to make sure. You're out of here. Build a big, big, big house, I want to see like five cockerels.
Just on behalf of the owner, it is, he was a little delayed, because he didn't realize he needed a special permit, so if there's anything we can do to speed up the conditions, he is looking to pull a building permit, he's building his own house. Just wanted to say that on behalf, but appreciate everything you can do. Thank you.
Okay. Enjoy Florida, I'll get a sign up.
Thanks, we'll see you, have a good night.
Yep, take care. Okay, next, we have a continued public hearing of our 146 Intervale Road special permit for major home occupation.
My favorite dude I've viewed, the pretzel guy, yeah.
Food preparation. Or, we'll call it Pretzel Factory.
I watched that video, and all I could think of is, man, salt mustard.
Yes. So we did open this public hearing at the last meeting, and I don't know, I think we did get the information that we needed. I don't know if the board's looking for anything additional.
I looked through the drawings after the meeting, I was quite satisfied with the concept.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Only thing was, isn't it, was how long to get this thing rocking and rolling?
I already signed it for common occupation while it's being built, if it's approved, so it should be up in running first or second to May.
You're on air bail, the only thing I warned you about is you're in a bear, a, a bear path walking area, so don't use a lot of honey on those pretzels. Telling you, that area, all the way over to Sasauna is a bear walking zone.
Anyway, as I recall, the, the drawing that was submitted was very nice, very well detailed.
Yeah. Yes, it was.
And, I'm just, the only thing I'm thinking of all along, would there be any special conditions on something like this? Well, the only thing I can think of is baking the pretzels there.
Are you gonna, are you gonna have any?
If they have an exhaust fan, they may be driving the neighbors wild, with the smell of the baking pretzels.
That and noise, the other thing is noise with the exhaust fan, sometimes they are, they're not...
Sorry, we're only doing electric oven, so we don't require an exhaust.
Okay.
It's just a single convection electric oven, so there won't be that as well as any, any, I don't have another dwelling within at least 500 feet of where my house is.
I was gonna say, you're set in the...
I'm in the woods.
In the woods. Okay, so you don't have the issue with any odor or anything like that, nothing like that?
Sure not the issue at all.
Good. I think most of the houses a little bit higher than you.
Yeah, they're a couple across the street, but they're up front, up on the hill.
Anything else from the board?
I'd just make a, you know, comment, I'm gonna abstain from this vote, only because Ryan and I have a history in the past, and he used to be an employee of mine. Either way, that's why I walked out of the room at the last meeting, because I was, didn't want to, but I just, if I can make the comment that this is, I think, exactly what I'd like to see more of in the town, people utilizing major home occupations, things have been talked about, and, you know, it sounds like the four of you agree with that, and that's really nice to hear. So I just wanted to, you know, make that comment, that I think home occupations are something that the town should continue to look for, and I applaud Ryan for doing what he's doing.
Appreciate it.
Motion to close the hearing?
Second. Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. Motion to approve a special permit for home occupation feud preparation use at 146 Intervale Road?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Once again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
I don't think there's norm to my second point that I always make, I don't think there's any special conditions for this, other than our boilerplate ones do for this one.
No.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, thanks. Well, just think this wasn't the A&R marathon that you could have...
Yep. Kevin, hands a sign or...
A decision will be drafted after this meeting, will be reviewed by the board as soon as possible. After that, the decision will have to be recorded to Town Clerk's office.
Okay.
And there's an appeal period, after the appeal period ends, and your building permits can be issued on this project.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Is that seven days, Dave, for that appeal process?
No, the appeal period is 20 days.
21?
After the 20th day, then, with the appeal being taken, then, that decision needs to be recorded to registry of deeds.
Okay.
Approved first back to the building department, then your building permits can then be issued at that time.
You can register that out of, you could bring it, I think, to save a little time, right? Is that a fair statement? Can he register the decision with the registry of deeds?
Certainly.
I'm just saying, just for...
At that time, when it's ready, sure.
As opposed to waiting for the town to do it?
Well, you have to wait for the appeal period to end before it can be...
Right.
The town doesn't do it.
Oh, they don't, oh, they don't, oh, okay, it's not like, it's not like that, okay? The town actually, he has to do it, he has to register, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Nate's Way, proposed road acceptance.
I could just cut it on this, so, there's nothing new to add to this, the engineering, Quinn, is still working with the applicant on this, and the review is not completed at this time.
All right, so we just move on.
We're still expecting this for, for the spring at the earliest.
Okay.
On the, on the fall, at the earliest.
Okay, so, and then, Dave, I, maybe I didn't see it in the packets, but the next three, we didn't have anything from Quinn on, did we?
That's correct.
Right, yep. So there is nothing on number 7, 4, 9. 10 zoning amendments, updates on home occupation, and...
Technical corrections.
Technical corrections.
I think those warrants have already been placed, correct, Mika?
That's correct.
They've been placed?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, they haven't been placed, they'll be placed on Thursday, but they've been drafted on the warrant.
That's what I meant to say.
Yes, I knew that's what you meant, and it's going to Town Council as well.
Yep, and those technical components that I had to listen to today, the FICOM got them tonight, I think, all the packets from everybody, is that correct?
I sent that information to the FICOM, that's correct.
Okay.
Also sent it to the Town Administrator's Office, see how the handouts.
Yes.
I was supposed to rough you up if they weren't already there tonight.
And I could just give a brief overview of this.
Yep.
So this is an informational session on these two proposed zoning changes, one is revisions and amendments to the home occupation bylaw, the other one is technical corrections to administrative aspects of creating a special permit, as well as the number of votes needed for various special permits. I'll try to be brief, I know it's getting late, I will be coming up with a power, so this, these items will be taken as for hearing on the 25th of April. By that time, I'll have a PowerPoint presentation that gets into more detail. This information has been distributed to the FICOM Town Administrator's Office, and it's also available online, the handout is. More information will follow, and will also be posted online as well. But tonight, just a brief overview of the home occupation bylaw. So, currently, the home occupation bylaw has definitions in one section, is a provision for a special permit home occupation for the major category in another section, then there's references to home occupations in other sections. And there is a definition for minor home occupation in major, but there's no real substantial coverage for the requirements for the minor category. So what this bylaw does for the first time, it brings all the relevant aspects of home occupation under one bylaw section. So the idea is currently, section 8B, as it exists in the bylaw right now, is only for major home occupation, which is allowable by special permit. So what we propose, and I will take one step back before going further, this has been reviewed by the Planning Board Bylaw Subcommittee, which has recommended this out to the Planning Board for a hearing. Time was spent on reviewing options, and this is what it's been come up with. So the idea here is that we now will remove the existing section 8B, and replace it with a new section 8B that has all the information in one convenient location, which now covers a purpose section for the first time, which is right here. The purpose section is really to encourage economic development in the town by leveraging the capacity of home occupations as something of an incubator. If these are successful in the home occupation context out of a home, then perhaps they can grow. If these businesses grow, maybe they stay in town. So it really is an economic development tool, and it consists of two types, a minor category and a major category. Both categories are allowable in the R40 and the R60 zoning districts, which are the residential zoning districts. A minor home occupation is permissible by right, and a major home occupation is still permissible by special permit. There's no extra requirement for the minor home occupation, the only thing that's happening here is for convenience, to put it in one location, it's been brought together under one section. So now we have the locations where it's allowed, and that the special permit granting authority remains the Planning Board as it was, as it is currently. And for the ones that are minor or major, a certificate of occupancy is required from the building department prior to the operation. This is just an added safeguard to make sure that the building commissioner is aware of it, should there be any upgrades necessary to the house for handicap access, or adequacy of the room areas, and so forth. Technically, under the building code, a use certificate of use occupancy is required for any change of use, this just formalizes what's allowable in the building code. Next, we get to the definition sections, where there's been revisions to minor and major home occupation compared to their current definitions. As you can see, these are very generalized definitions, which are meant to be flexible, to provide as many types of home occupation possible in the residential districts. So minor home occupation is a use conducted for profit, which does not change the residential character of the dwelling. A major home occupation is a use conducted for profit, which does not change the residential character of the dwelling, but, which may have a greater impact on the neighborhood than a minor home occupation. Now, in order for these to be granted, the requirements that appear below in section 4 have to be met. So once again, because there's two categories of home occupation that are part of this bylaw, we have conditions and requirements that pertain to minor home occupations, which is in the first section, and then section 5 are conditions and requirements that pertain to major home occupations. Now, as there's no minor home occupation conditions and requirements, what we've done is mirror the requirements that exist currently for conditions and requirements for major home occupation, and those really... home occupation, and those really talk about the number of employees, makes it clear that this has to be accessory to the home, to the main use of the structure as a dwelling. For minor, talks about the storage of outdoor equipment, it talks about the maximum of three parking spaces being required, signage, and the amount of space that can be used on the site for the home occupation. And in order to be flexible to operators like food trucks and small contractors who have maybe a box truck in a, in a, in a truck, to allow it by right, those entities cannot exceed the number of business vehicles and trailers. So that's 20,000 pounds for one business vehicle, a truck, pickup truck, and one trailer, not to exceed the capacity of 15,000 pounds. So this is allowable by right. This is specifically meant to acknowledge the number of tradespeople in town, and the fact that there's a lot of small operators who have a truck and a trailer or some other piece of equipment. So this allows it by right, it just acknowledges it. Because currently, there may be some gray areas that these are not acknowledged, and they may not be considered allowed under the current zoning bylaw. So this really brings that in, and acknowledges the importance of the tradespeople in town, for them to conduct their businesses out of their homes, and also small operators like food truck vendors, maybe have one truck. So this allows a place for it to be stored on the property. Then we finish up with hours of operation. So, the next category, the conditions and requirements for major home occupation. Once again, we talked about the number of employees, that has to be incidental and subordinate to the primary use of the structure. And then we talk about utility areas, parking needs, and signage, the selling of products, lighting, and the number of vehicles, and the other requirements for location, the amount of space on the lot, and accessory structures, customers, and hours of operation. Now, many of these requirements here, because major home occupation requires a special permit, there is flexibility that the board can grant more than what's listed here, but this is the bare minimum. This establishes what's permissible by special permit versus up above what's permissible by right. So it's not simply the definition, the definition works with the requirements. This is how we test out whether it's minor or major. And then to finish up briefly, we do have specific findings of fact that pertain to a major home occupation and a minor, and we just make it clear here that the board can issue and impose other conditions that are deemed necessary to preserve neighborhood character and the functionality of a given site and proposal. And the last section, several, several ability, means that if any section is struck down for some reason, that the rest of the bylaw remains in effect. I will say that this is pretty, a pretty standard approach to this type of bylaw, it's looking to address intensity measures, not uses, so we don't have, you know, a bunch of pages of uses, we're looking at intensity measures, and one has discretion with a special permit, the other's by right. So that's the home occupation bylaw in a nutshell. If there's any questions or comments, or what have you?
I think that's a great summary.
I think it's awesome. I just, one, on the minor, when you go back up and you see, and I'm just looking down the road, you got a guy that owns a construction company, he's within the guidelines of the truck and the trailer and the weight, but then he ends up with six or seven or eight old excavators sitting on the property. So it's equipment versus registered vehicles, is that, you know, something to just be cautious of and know that, you know, all of a sudden, if it becomes a junkyard and a by right, I know we currently have, I think, some bylaws, X amount of vehicles that aren't registered and shouldn't be here and there, that's my only fear, is there was some, you drive around town and there's some, there's some places that really could be cleaned up, and that would just be something I was just curious about.
Well, with vehicles, it would be covered under the unregistered vehicle bylaw.
And if it's equipment?
Equipment, it's...
Old oozers and excavator, you know?
No matter what, there's nobody taking care of it anyway, so who the hell cares?
That's true.
I'm sorry to say.
I think that would be categorized as a vehicle, or it would be otherwise subject to some kind of zoning enforcement. Or, in the alternate, if the entity wants to apply for the special permit, now they're not on the level, to keep these things on, on the site, that would be another option.
And I only foresee a neighbor complaining, it's not, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not a member of the board to be driving around looking for, you know, but if a neighbor complains and, you know, that conversation has to happen. Probably, then it goes to zoning enforcement, and then they step in and take care of it.
Yep. And not only that, it's two year on a special permit?
Well, no, it's two years to commence operation under the special permit, the special permit is good, as long, the special permit's good, the only way would be lessened as if there's a specific condition or time on the special permit, otherwise, there's no limit, as long as it commences within two, two years.
Within two years, yeah.
And on the minor home occupation by right, they still come before the board?
No, my, the by right only goes to the Building Commissioner.
But the town knows there's a business there.
That's right, that's where the certificate of occupancy comes into play.
Yep.
Because it goes to the Building Commissioner, he looks at it, issues a certificate of occupancy if it meets Condition 4. If it doesn't, then the determination that it's major.
Okay.
Well, then he sends it to the Planning Board.
Correct.
Sends them to the Planning Board or to you guys.
Yep, okay, good. I think this cleans up what we had before.
Yeah, it does, it just, it's easier to read, it hasn't, it hasn't really changed it an awful lot when it comes to this.
Not substantially, it's really, it didn't really modify the major section too much, it really brought in requirements and conditions for minor that did not previously exist.
Yep.
So this gives it a framework, some guidance.
But Dave, that before, this is my opinion, that home occupancy portion of the bylaw was confusing, to say the least. So I think what I see up here really makes it easier for somebody to understand and also to be able to adhere to.
It was confusing because the definitions were all be here.
Yeah.
The references were here, some references didn't exist, so it's all be visible.
Yeah, yeah. Do we need to...
This is your average house.
Do we need to vote on this to approve it, to send it?
This is just an informational session, the hearing is next meeting?
Oh, that's right.
We just wanted to let the public know that this exists, to gather comments and put it out there now.
No, I think this is great.
Do we need to have a meeting on this week?
If you'd like.
I just happen to have. We don't get...
People are still working on some other bylaw changes.
Okay.
We do have the marijuana one that was brought to your attention recently, we're still waiting.
Oh, for the changes in the delivery system?
We still have the other large parcel, I mean, is under consideration for rezoning. If you'd like to meet, otherwise, wait until after town meeting, either way.
You could go either way.
If you'd like to wait till after town meeting, that's your call, we are busy in the office, I can say that much, we're trying to finish up some things for town meeting.
Right.
We did receive some feedback from Town Council on this one, maybe we can have that conversation now. The Town Council indicated that they thought that the definitions were too general, and I pointed out to them that the conditions, that the definitions are consistent with the current definitions, and that they're meant to be, they're meant to rely on the conditions being met, not to be overly prescriptive by use. So if you'd like to discuss that, we can do that, so it's up to you, how do you want to do that?
Any comments from the rest of the committee?
Marilyn, I like this because it's, the idea is to make it open for people in town to get in business and start small businesses. I don't like the restrictive portion of what, like, we call out, you can only do this, 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 and this. So I disagree with the attorney on this one.
But my question is, do we, does the board feel that we need to have a bylaw Subcommittee meeting this week? I mean, I...
I thought, at least on the big parcel, that he needed more time, he was, so I don't know if it'd be productive, that's my opinion.
Correct, I agree. Okay, so...
But I would like to say the board, I'd like to continue having the departing board member on the bylaw Subcommittee. I'll vote on it, I, yes.
Well, it could be the, what's the word I want? The civilian, the civilian member of the board. No, I would be, I would be happy to do that if the board would like that.
So I'm understanding that you don't want to have a meeting next week?
You are, correct.
So if there's nothing further on this, I'll move to the next bylaw proposal. This bylaw proposal is for technical corrections to the bylaw. Actually, this is, in the handout, I will say, we do have the strikeout version, so that the public can see the work and see what was removed and why it was removed, there's some notes in here. So the second part of the document is just a strike through version. And then we get to the zoning changes that are technical corrections. These are technical corrections for two sections, Section 42 and 44 of the zoning bylaw. Section 42 describes the number of votes required for action under a special permit. Now, recently, there was a change in the number of board members for the zoning board of appeals from three to five. So under the prior language, it needed three members of a three-member board to vote favorably for a special permit for the zoning board. Because they changed their composition, the number is greater, which in most cases is four members out of five. However, not all special permits require a super majority, there are some special permits that are a simple majority, these had to do with the Housing Act that Baker had passed for zoning updates a couple of years ago. So therefore, we have the language unless otherwise provided in form of the Zoning Act, that accounts for a lesser vote in certain instances. But for your general special permit, it could be four, the other ones that are going to be just a simple majority have to do with affordable housing within a certain area of the town center district. If we get such a situation where the board needs to be apprised as to what the vote is, we will step in at that point and tell the board what their vote, what vote needs to happen. We'll do that as needed. So this basically updates the language for the zoning board, it makes it clear that not all special permits require a super, a super majority anymore. And then there was another recent change to the Zoning Act, which allows for most special permits to be valid for two, three years instead of two. So they would last, if not acted upon, in three years instead of two. Now, once again, this does not apply to all special permits, there are some special permits that are only good for two years, were not affected by the Housing Choice Act. For example, adult entertainment is only for two years, and that's listed in that particular section of the Zoning Act. So this is just updated to make it consistent with the Zoning Act, that's three years for most special permits, unless otherwise provided for the zoning act, would allow for the board to act within a lesser time for specific instances, if those instances were ever to come up, we would make the boards aware of what those situations are. But for most special permits, it's three years instead of two. So these are technical corrections in Sections 42 and 44, so I just want, after memory card is, there you go. That's pretty much what I had on that one, thank you.
Nice work.
Thank you.
With that, that's the end of the agenda, I'm gonna borrow Peter Crane. Is there any other, is there any other business to come up with?
What about number 11?
Yeah, just to give the board an update, so, we do have a subdivision that came in recently. This is a four-lot subdivision, it's an extension of Forest Hills Drive, currently it terminates in a driveway and is a house on one large landholding, the idea is to create a small cul-de-sac to create fringes for additional lots. So that's coming at the next meeting, and then the hearing on the zoning amendments.
That's too bad, because it'd make a nice feel for baseball and soccer and things like that, so close to the center of town. Too bad the town didn't have money for such a thing.
It will in November.
I don't think so, Tom.
Snicker, you're joking. You think that money hasn't been voted for in four ways?
I guarantee you that that money will not go into general fund for RDIC, I guarantee you that.
Oh, that's a guarantee.
That's what I meant for money for property, the RDIC, because I think that's designated just for land purchases, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, that's what I was referring to.
Well, that's why I said, we'd have some money for this in November, but that one won't be voted...
For any purpose that...
I just want to mention this, anybody in the moment's available.
Borrowing, that's what it can be used by, and once it gets... It's free cash.
I won't, I won't argue for Mike Sullivan, but I think that's wrong, I think it's...
No, that's NGL, Tim, if I may, yeah, it has to, it can only be used for purposes for which you would borrow for more than five years, because it was from the sale of real estate. We took the Town Council on that.
So it can't just be used specifically for real estate, it can be used for...
Right, for anything borrowed more than five years.
No, that's not the school budget, so I'm happy. Through the chair, just real quick, one comment, if you guys aren't aware, our, Amy in the Board of Assessors office has done, if you guys have never seen this before, you'll get it, but it's available over there, and it is a complete breakdown of where every penny of our tax dollars go to. So this is something that I had worked on when I was on the Board of Assessors with RRG, and we put this all together, and it's, it's, it's pretty amazing to really look at this, break it all down. I think this gives information to the town, I think every board member, every employee, every resident should read it and look at it, and realize that our average tax bill is 57.60, and, you know, it breaks it all right down, the ambulance, $229, animal control gets $12 of that, public safety dispatch, fire protection. My point in this is that it shows that our average tax bill is just under $6,000, but it ends up costing us a lot more money in that through the education system, and that's why I believe, one reason I believe, in my opinion, this town is in a position that it's in, is because of the amount of houses we're building, and the median house is not equating to positive cash flow. Every house we build, we lose money.
Yeah.
And that's a very telling statement, and I, that's why I like the 10-acre lots, I like the 15-acre lots, I believe that equates to a larger tax bill per lot, per house, per 1.5 children in the school system. It helps us get a little bit out of where we are, and you look at where the money was spent on the next page, where our money comes in from, property class, single-family homes brings in $1.1 million, condominiums, mobile homes, two-family homes, three-family homes, apartments, mixed-use vacant land, and then at the, almost $20,000 in commercial land. You know what, I'm so rezoning, re, that, you know, we're not getting any money from industrial or commercial in the town, we're getting a total of $25,000 out of millions from commercial and industrial land, and I think that's something that needs to change in this town.
We need to have better transportation, we need to have a way to get trailer trucks in and out of this area, and cars, where's Route 49 that was supposed to be put in?
Is that Kevin on the Assessor's Board? If it was, you can take this one, I, take it home, read it, study it.
I'll talk to Amy so I can get it put up on the website, too.
That's what I was gonna ask me.
Excellent.
I think putting the PDF in there would be... I'd love it to go, and everybody that comes to the town meeting gets a copy of it as they walk in the door, I don't, I don't know if that's possible, but...
Well...
I give Amy a lot of credit for that, there's a lot of time put into that, and she deserves some accolades for what she did, and it's pretty great.
Would you mind if I made a motion to adjourn?
Nope. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.